Okay, great, thank you. All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Placerville City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 26. And before we adjourn into closed session, I wanted to open up for anyone in the public to, if they had any comments on our closed session items.
Looks like we have zero attendees currently, Mayor, so I will assume we have no comments.
Okay, then, we will adjourn out of this regular session into closed session. So if everyone council members can log into the closed session Zoom now, thank you. Well, good evening, Placerville, and welcome to, again, this Tuesday, May 26 meeting of the Placerville City Council. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and have roll call, Ms. O'Connell.
Mayor Sarah Gossett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Member Barelli.
Here.
Member Taylor.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Moving right along, we'll move to item three, and first item 3.1, which is a COVID-19 update. And I believe Mr. Morris has this for us tonight. Cleve, we're on you for the COVID-19 update. Cleve, you're on mute.
Thank you, sorry.
No problem.
Heard that enough. So, not a lot to add, hopefully, all of you have received most of the information. We continue to monitor the going forward, and probably the biggest announcement currently is the announcements from yesterday and today that the governor made in terms of allowing religious institutions to begin offering services under certain restrictions that they can put together their, what they can do. Also, today's announcement that barber shops and beauty salons can open again under certain guidelines that the state has released. So those, these are the things that are out there, we continue to monitor and look at what is being done and what needs to be done, following up and working with the county specifically on going forward. Many questions came out about, well, salons were supposed to be in phase three, so why are we in phase three now? And if you saw the county's press release that went out late this afternoon, stated that, no, we are not in phase three, but the governor has allowed those to open as part of those counties that have the extended phase two in place at this time and are moving forward. So with that, again, we continue to monitor, encourage people to don't think because, just because we're going to these additional phases that we're over this and we can relax, we do need to continue to be diligent in following the guidelines that are set up and being safe so that we can move forward. On another note, along those lines, just so everyone knows, we are looking at opening City Hall on June 1st. However, we do encourage the public, if at all possible, to continue to use our email and phone systems, web, website systems, et cetera, that will allow you to do business the same way we've done during this time in order to avoid too many people being in City Hall at one time. But we will be opening our doors for the public on June 1st. And we put together our own safety plan for the city, for our city employees, to make sure that we can do that safely. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Morris. Questions from council members? Comments? Okay, see, Cleve, on, as it pertains to the homeless aspect on, kind of where these two things join together, is there any updates on that front?
Um, we did have a meeting, I did, with the county, myself and our interim chief, Joe Ren, police chief, regarding the policy, the joint policy that we adopted with the county. We met last week to hear a presentation from Homebase and talk about what we need to do and moving forward to implement that policy. There was a lot of discussion along those lines regarding what do we do? And in the end, where we finished with it is, as is stated in, I believe it's policy number two of that policy, is to move forward with identifying sites that could serve as a navigation center. And so the county has directed their facilities manager to locate potential facilities that meet certain requirements identified by Homebase, by the city and county, that could potentially serve as a navigation center in the county. So that's where we left it for now.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments here? I'm going to go ahead and open it up for any public comment on 3.1.
Now taking public comment from Mandy. Looks like Mandy fell off there. Hold on just one moment, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Hi.
Hi, good evening, Mandy.
How's everyone doing?
We're good.
Okay, so, you know, we were, a million people die, 100,000 people are gonna die, it's not looking, these numbers aren't adding up, the data doesn't add up, it hasn't. Now the CDC revised their, their numbers, now they're saying it's a point zero, point, I'm sorry, 0.26% chance of death from COVID. What we did was totally ridiculous when we look back, it's, we're gonna look back in history and go, wow, that was a big mistake. So with that said, I really want all of these restrictions taken off, and a lot of other people do, you can see it by the amount of people voting with their dollars outside in public. I'd like to see you guys push the, the county to start allowing youth sports. Kids need sports, even at a lower risk than adults, they need to have that. This has been really hard for kids, and it really hurts me to see that. Another thing is the farmer's market, they're not allowed to have food, like, they can cook food at home and bring it and sell it at the farmer's market, but they can't cook food at the farmer's market. I see no reason why someone can't have an outdoor taco stand. You know, the churches, there's a hundred person cap on churches, most of our churches are small, but the church I go to is big, so I'd like to see that tossed. So, you know, I just, I'm concerned that our public health director has too much power for an unelected employee, and I don't see enough experience in her resume to be, to be basically ruling over a county of this size. So that's really all I have to say, I just like to continue to push to open, we need to get back to normal, not new normal, 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 real life, people are voting outside in the air, you know, more people that are been, that are calling in and complaining. So, anyway, that's all I have to say, thanks, you guys, have a great day.
Thank you, Mandy, appreciate the comments.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any other comments on this 3.1?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to correct the caller, it's not Dr. Williams' orders, although she certainly does have authority, these are orders that are coming from the governor's office. And while I know we're all frustrated, I, for one, am very proud that despite a tremendous amount of concern that we were overreacting, that we were the second county in the state of California to be allowed to go to stage two and advanced stage two, and we have all been working as a community, all the electeds and all of our staff and all of our citizens to work our way through this thing together, and I think we need to continue to do that. I can appreciate the concerns about youth sports and absolutely letting all of our kids be able to burn off that energy, but we also are then exposing coaches, and coaches are going home to other family members and on and on. This, this disease is still out there, there was just a flare-up that was associated with Placerville just in the last 10 days, and a number of people did test positive, so this darn thing is, it's invisible and it's still out there. And so I think we need to maintain what we're doing and continue to support all parts of our community to the best that we can, and I would thank Dr. Williams for her work and her being an advocate and also all of the supervisors, because they really are the ones that have been taking the brunt of this and having to react very quickly and appreciate them doing that. Again, that does allow us to continue to reopen, but we do need to be very careful. And one sad thing about this disease is it appears to be very consistent in its timeframes, so we will know within the next few days and two weeks whether or not, you know, how successful we have been. So, and I look at the suffering that went on in Italy and other parts of Europe, and, you know, to suggest that, and listening to the suggestions that those folks had, you know, there's a very real risk, so, because these are very difficult times, I, for one, am very glad for all the hard work that my colleagues have done.
Well, thank you, Mark, and I definitely appreciate those comments, and absolutely, I mean, 100, oh, Patty, go for it.
I just wanted to say the same thing, I don't think it's that Dr. Williams is certainly, this was a power that was given to her by her position, but she did follow the guidelines that were, you know, dictated to her by the state, and if it weren't for her and all the midnight oil that she and her colleagues burned, we would not have been able to open as soon as we did. So I just have many thanks for her and all the folks that really worked hard on this.
Agree, unfortunately, the way things, we don't control our own destiny on these, at least not at this point, so we did have to work through Dr. Williams, I thought she's done a really good job of getting this to where we're at, and reality is, close to 100,000 people have died in a very short window of time outside of the flu season. And so it's, it is real. And there's obviously things we could have done better and differently, but I think we're on a good path here. Okay, let's move on to item 3.2, which is our update on public records requests, and this is Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, City Council, just to provide you a quick update on our current public records requests, we have, the staff report shows four open requests, but we actually have three, because I believe Jennifer Chapman was, she received a response today. We do have the Wapoomnus tribe request from February is still open, the next set of documents, and I believe the last will be provided on June 12th. That would be our, our fourth group of documents sent to them. And then Kirk Smith is still open, we're waiting for a potential clarification of his request. And we have one open from Rush and Smith that should be responded to before the end of the week, so that's just a quick update, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Questions from colleagues on council on this? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment on 3.2.
Now taking public comment from 846.
Jennifer.
Good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi there, thank you.
Yep.
I just, because it wasn't stated what the nature of the request was, I do think it's important to understand what it was, it was a simple request that was made to both the city and to Caltrans for whatever the working, you know, draft is of the cumulative effects analysis for the Clay Street project. So that's part of CEQA and NEPA is to actually, you know, address when you're talking about impacts such as to historic resources, that you would actually do an analysis of, of, you know, the impacts from past, present, and future, you know, foreseeable impacts to historic resources. So it was a bit of a concern, it sounded like neither Caltrans or the city on either side of the planning process had, had a document, which means they didn't have a working draft, which means they hadn't started to look at that. And I, I mean, I just want to bring it to your attention, because clearly, you know, when, when we're looking at destroying other historic resources, you know, we are at kind of a point where there's, you know, a lot of, a lot of things have already been destroyed, and so we're trying to put that a little bit in perspective. So I just wanted to, if people weren't aware of what the request was, it was a simple request, not a time-consuming request, and it was very simple because there was no record to produce in response to the request, five years or however many years into this planning process. I think you, yeah, you recapped the history of starting in 2015 on this round with the project. So, anyway, I, I just wanted to say what the nature of that was, and then, you know, again, I, just back to the Wapoomnus tribe, which I don't think I mentioned last time on the comment on this topic, is just, I, you know, I just think it's important to acknowledge that one of the responses to their request was to simply provide a whole lot of city agendas, some of which had no reference to the nature of their request. And so, anyway, it's just, you know, hopefully, there's not, you know, just, just, you know, excessive, you know, work being created on either side of this requesting process, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yes, you know, for the public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna move on to item 3.3, which are brief comments by City Council, and I will start with Councilmember Barelli.
I just want to give a shout out to John Sanders at Hangtown Grill. I had the pleasure of having two meals that I ordered and drove into the front of the place and picked it up, and it was, they just did a, the organization, okay, so back up, he, he did this in conjunction with fundraising for some of our organizations, and the folks that belong to those organizations had a really great system in getting us all our orders and, you know, getting us done in a really short time, so I just want to say kudos to him once again for pitching in and helping the community.
Great, thank you, Patty. Councilmember Taylor. Oh, you're on mute still, Cara.
Thank you. Yesterday was Memorial Day, so I'd be remiss not to mention that, I know it was a very strange Memorial Day with COVID-19 going on, and, you know, a lot of smaller group gatherings, a lot of ceremonies put online instead of in person, but still important to honor all the fallen soldiers that have made the ultimate sacrifice fighting for what's important to us all. And I just, I also wanted to thank Dennis and John Clarici for their work on the flower baskets downtown, they look really great, so that's all my comments.
Thank you, Cara. Councilmember Acuna.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple things, wanted to just mention that yourself and city manager, we met on May 20th with Brandon Sanders from PG&E, and got a preliminary, a very preliminary overview of their 220 planned hours, hours safety shut-off program. There's some interesting. We'll come for fall, that'll actually be here in the county, which that's a first also, so they were, hopefully are seeing some good steps forward with their process, and hopefully we won't have any, so thank you for, for Council's trust in allowing me to continue to work on that particular project. Also like to shout out and welcome our interim police chief, interim chief Joe Ren, he is here again this evening and is officially here as our interim chief, and I know that he and the department are going to do wonderful, great things and look forward to his leadership in the coming months. And I think that's probably about it, again, I just wanted to thank the community for their resolve and commitment to all working together through the ongoing COVID emergency.
Thank you, Mark. Vice Mayor Thomas.
You're muted.
Unmute myself there. Well, thank you, Cara, for the flower baskets. One of the things that we have done and begun working on, John and I, is soliciting for sponsors for the baskets, and we've had a few step up already, and I, and both John and I, I think we're gonna, right now, we're, well, I guess Dave said that we had $350 and we're working on, I know that we have at least another 750, what's the right word?
Commitments.
Commitments, thank you. And so, yes, thank you. And so, so we're off to a good start, so we're up over $1,000, our goal is to get around $5,000. We are so that we can fund the next years and fund partial of this year's. We have, we have more, just this morning started working and watering the plants. And so they are up and running, and it's exciting to see them out there doing that, and this program is very important to their clients in that it gives them a job, and it, so it's not just funding the baskets, the baskets would be not that expensive to fund, but, you know, it's really about supporting more and their clients and their program, and, and getting them out, doing healthy things out in the sun, and I, I saw, drove by this morning and saw them watering, and, and I talked to the gentleman last week, and he was super excited to get back out and get back to work. So if people, we are accepting donations to support the flower baskets, and I'll be talking to a few of you, if you don't reach out to me by yourself, and to, to support the baskets. We'd like to, to get $250 donations per basket, and that would, that would fund the whole program with about 20, with all 20 baskets being supported. Patty, just a second there.
A question for you.
Yes.
I, I'm wondering, going back to more, is there any possibility that maybe Suzie could get some funding as, like, job placement for some of her clients that?
I think that's a great question for Suzie.
I do. But I didn't know if you had already asked her, so.
No, I haven't, the, the, well, historically, the funding source has been.
I understand, but I was just.
Downtown merchants donations to support, and just for clarity, this 11,000, the $11,000 that the city has historically donated to PDA for marketing and promotions downtown had never gone towards the flower baskets, it has always gone towards marketing promotions, and flower baskets have always been a completely different bucket of money that has primarily been fundraised one through one source or another. And so this is a continuation of that effort, and that law has changed, the only thing that has changed is the city's administering it. Another thing is, is that the Fire Safety Council, not the Fire Safety Council, but our program with the city, going out and reviewing people's properties and, and giving them notices to, to clean up their property is working, and I have talked to several property owners who got the notices, were concerned and wanted to comply, wanted to figure out how to comply, and, and so I had some conversations with them, they are, and they want to, they just, there's, I think there's some issues with clarity, and hopefully we can clear that up, in terms of the notices that are being left, they're, they're kind of vague, and so I have some concerns about that from the fire district side, that we can have a more clear, you know, definition of exactly what it is that needs it, because it's kind of a, the notices that I've been, it's been shared with me, have been vague. That's all I have, so, I do want to help, hope people will help sponsor baskets, I know I will be personally sponsoring one, I know that John Clarici has offered, and I'm, and I'm hoping, and I heard somebody say, there's a rumor that the city council might together sponsor a basket.
Yes, Councilmember Acuna.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis, you're absolutely right, and I recall last year, the issue of the baskets came up, and the council had unanimously suggested that this year, that they would indeed sponsor a basket, so I think we should need to fulfill that commitment, and so count me in for my share of a basket, and I think it's only appropriate, and I had saw the more folks out there, and I thought that was wonderful, that we're back to that point now where they can get out there and take over and get those jobs back, it's just super important for them. Thank you very much, and thank you to Mr. Clarici and everybody else involved behind the scenes, making sure this is happening, so.
Yep, Patty?
I remember when Carol Patton, she used to be on the city council, and she was part of the downtown business people, and I think she was really kind of responsible for these flower baskets, and they used to hold fundraisers every year, I can remember attending those, and they were really good fundraisers, and we had a lot of good turnout, and they, through that, they were able to raise enough. Maybe we ought to.
I was involved with that too, Patty.
Okay, maybe we ought to talk to John Sanders.
Well, absolutely, definitely count me in as part of the, the council portion, for one, I'm also going to sponsor, my wife and I are gonna sponsor one as well ourselves, so we're happy to do that and contribute to this great program, so Dennis and John, thank you for taking leadership on, on that issue. As Mark mentioned, we had a meeting with PG&E, I thought it was a pretty good meeting, going over some of the concerns we raised last year in terms of the non-wind events that did not happen in Placerville, I think we just had one that actually clocked in on that one Sunday last year, so we had good conversations around that, around the transmission line coming in from Mo Flat into the city of Placerville, as well as our hospital, and the ability, you know, to get as many of our houses and businesses, you know, online and not have any PSPs, so certainly can't guarantee that, but I thought it was a good step forward. And again, Mark, thank you for your leadership on this issue, I think it's critical for what your experience is, and Mark, you had, you want to add something else, sir?
If you don't, pardon me for interrupting, but.
No, not at all.
Huge issue last year, and I want to let everybody know, there was the whole north side and south side of Main Street from Bedford down to Pacific, and one side was out and one side was on, and we are addressing that with PG&E this year, so hopefully we'll have, hopefully that won't happen, that they are, we are gonna make sure that they, they are really aware of that and working hard to make sure that both sides of Main Street are energized on their system. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely, and I know the paper also, I know it's outside of ours, but, you know, to the extent that there's going to be microgrids in Georgetown and Pollock Pines as well, that PG&E is currently working on as well. And then the lastly for me, I just had the honor, I know this year, as Cara mentioned as well, you know, we didn't have our annual Eldorado County Memorial at the monument because of COVID-19 concerns, and so the Veterans Association decided to do a smaller version of that, where I had the honor of representing the city, and then supervisor Bear Camp there for the county to do brief proclamations in support of, you know, all of our soldiers that gave the ultimate sacrifice, so it was always a somber event, but I was, you know, very honored to be there on behalf of the city, so I just wanted to add that as well, and I know it's, it's somewhere on Channel 2, I haven't actually had a chance to, to see it yet, but I'll have to go online and watch it myself, but want to thank all the veterans that were there, Gary, for organizing everything and putting it together, they did a really good job. Gary for organizing everything and putting it together. They did a really good job. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to item four, which is our closed session. And Mr. Driscoll, do we have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not. Council did not take reportable action tonight in closed session.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on, item five, adoption of agenda.
Move for the adoption.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? None? Okay. The agenda is adopted tonight. No ceremonial matters. So we'll move on to item seven, which is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. And that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. So we'll move on to item 7.1. Cleve, did we receive any written communications this evening for tonight's meeting?
Mayor and council, we see written communications on items 12.1 and 12.2. Those have been forwarded to the council and some of those where they requested it will be read by the city clerk regarding those items. Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. So move, so we'll move on to item 7.2, oral communications. And I'll hand it back over to Regina.
If you are joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak and you will be called upon using the last three digits of your phone number. If you're adjoining by your computer, use the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. Unmute yourself when called upon and voluntarily give your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Now accepting public comment from 846.
Hi. Hi, it's Jennifer.
Jennifer.
Hey there. So I guess maybe it didn't rise to written correspondence because it wasn't issue oriented. But I did want to say that, you know, if, if any of you are available to listen in on Thursday with our Placerville History Channel programming, you know, we do have a guest speaker from the city planning department of San Francisco who worked on the Delta National Heritage area, National Heritage Area, California's first National Heritage Area, which, you know, even with all that park outreach that I was doing, I, nobody mentioned it. And I am just surprised and thinking it's pretty neat that there is a National Heritage Area around the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. And it's a great example of counties and cities working together on a non-traditional type of designation. This is not a unit of the park system, the way the Gold Rush National Historical Park concept was proposing, but it has some similarities. And, you know, I just think that it would be of interest and I don't know if Pierre's on tonight, but I think he in particular would be appropriate to listen in on that. Other than that, I just want to say Friends of Clay Street will be actually sending out a request, hoping that city folks can join us for a Friends of Clay Street meeting. We're, we're asking about Friday, June 5th, which is a week from this Friday to probably have a gathering on Zoom because it seems to be the most convenient way to meet these days. But, you know, just to talk about again, some of our neighborhood traffic issues, as well as just some of the, the things and planning going on related to the Cottonwood 46 development, what the status of that is. And hopefully finding out more and encouraging more development of that Poverty Hill-Rotham Court side as far as, you know, access and egress and having, having another way in and out of that future development. I think those are the highlights for this part and I'll just comment more during the Clay Street topic. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer.
Now taking public comment from JC.
Are you still on mute? I think the person might be on mute still.
I'm muted. Hi there.
Hey, hello, sir.
Hi there. This is John Clarici. Thank you very much. Shout out to Terry Zeller, Dennis and Zane, whose last name escapes me, for doing the whole flower thing. I got right on the tail end of the mayor's comments and, oh, and by the way, thank you for your generous donation. And it's just going off really well. And I understand more workshop took, picked up the watering today. So it just shows what you can do when you get a bunch of motivated people together that are problem solvers. So anyway, thanks to the vice mayor for, for helping out and, and we'll keep an eye on them all summer long to make sure that they stay alive. So anyway, that was it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. I don't think I had anything there that required staff follow-up on. So we will go ahead and move on to item eight, the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull 8.6.
Okay, so that is the filing of the new bi-weekly water and wastewater rates recommendations. Okay?
That's correct.
So is that a, a second with the provizio of pulling 8.6?
I would second the motion if that was the.
I already seconded and I said yes. The, Cara needs to change.
Oh, I need to change the motion? Okay. I, I'll move to approve the consent calendar with 8.6 being pulled for discussion.
Okay, we had a second from Patty.
Yeah, and Mike can have it if you don't care.
All right, so we have a first and a second. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment on the rest of the consent calendar.
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. So with that first and second, let's have roll call.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. So we will now move to item nine, items pulled from the consent calendar. And that's item 8.6, acknowledge and file the report regarding the implementation of the new bi-monthly water and wastewater rates recommended by Bartle Wells Associates effective June 16th of 2020. And Mr. Warren has this report for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Serra Dawson and councilmembers. Councilmember Acuna, would you like a full staff report or just answer some questions?
No, sir. If you would like, I would be happy to just take the item and you, you harden up on the budget. Dave and my colleagues, I feel it's important that we make sure that this is where the rates are going. And this is a process that we've had in place. These rates have been studied and authorized during previous actions. It's been all reviewed. Yes, we are raising the rates. Fortunately, it's not a significant amount of money, but yet it is more money. But what it's going to do is prevent us from falling back into that terrible position we were in years ago where we never raised the rates and it was always kicked, the can was kicked down the road for, it seemed like decades. And, you know, our current finance officer, Mr. Warren, and our city engineer Rebecca Neves and Nick Stone have done a great job in getting our organization and our facilities more right side than they have been in years. And so, well, no, no raises is, is enjoyed. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of it, just for transparency and to acknowledge that this, these dollars will be wisely invested in the continuing operation and improvement of our system. So again, thanks to the staff that have gotten us to this point. And with that, I would go move, move for approval of the item.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. And we have a second. Do we have any further comments from councilmembers? Casey and Nun will go ahead and open up 8.6 for public comment.
Now taking public comment from Sue.
Good evening, Sue.
Good evening. Thanks for pulling this. That was going to be my one comment on the consent was my just concern for the timing. I know when this was all agreed to, it was before COVID happened. And so I just have a little concern that this is going to hit when everybody's having such a hard time with the economy. So especially the businesses. So anyway, I just thought, I, it doesn't sound like there would be a reconsideration of timing. But I just wanted to voice my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay. Okay. You know, from my standpoint, there's never a good time, I mean, certainly in post-COVID world and even in COVID world, there's never going to be a good time for doing this. And to Mark's comments, you fall behind. I think it's at the state level and other cities, you don't do it. There's always a good reason to not do it. And then we come back and have to ask, you know, people for seven, eight percent increases because we didn't do it beforehand. So I think we have to bite the bullet here and move forward with it. As much as I'd like to sideline this for a bit, things aren't going to, you know, we're, we're just going to have to recoup those funds at some point and it's just going to be even harder to do later down the road. So I think this is why it's for us to move forward here. Mr. Thomas.
I, I had similar concerns regarding the rate increase and the timing of it. And I agree with you, Mayor Saragosa as well. And I, and then I looked at the rate increases and they are nominal amount individually. However, collectively, it makes a significant impact in our, in our budget. And that's also, you know, I've said this before, this, this is our facility. It is the city's residents. It's our facility and we need to not only take care of it, but we need to pay for it. And this is how we set it up years ago. We're following a process that pays for it. And the city's as short as everybody else's, I think collectively, you know, I see it's a nominal amount of increase for individuals and businesses, but it's a big dollar for us. So I, yeah. So there we go.
Yep, agree with you. Not something fun to have to put forward, but necessary. So we had a, we have a first and a second, correct, on the table. So Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody, on this. There tonight, this evening, there are no ordinances or public hearings. So items 10 and 11. So we'll move on to item 12, discussion and action items. And the first item is 12.1, by minute order, select the date and approve the procedure for the cannabis commercial business permit appeals hearing. And I don't know, is Cleve, are you taking the lead here or is this going to be Mr. Driscoll?
I'll let Mr. Driscoll handle this one. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. All right, John, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last council meeting, staff was directed by the council to move forward with setting a date for the cannabis commercial business permit appeals and to determine a procedure for those hearings. We have suggested the week of July 13th or the week of July 20th for possible hearing date. And we're hoping it can be done in one day. The hearings, there are four appeals. Each one is entitled to a separate hearing. There may be some overlap with respect to the issues brought forth in each of those appeals. So that it may not be that each hearing will have to be as long as the initial one, let's say. Excuse me. What we're suggesting is that once the date is determined, that we give the appellant's and the applicant selected by the city manager, who I'll refer to later as the selected applicants, and all the remaining applicants made up that 11 applicants that got to phase three, we give them notice of the date and allow the, excuse me, selected applicants to have an opportunity to address the issues that are aimed at them in terms of the appeals. And, and just without going into the merits of the appeals, I can say that the appeals, at least three of the appeals are directed in part at the selected applicant saying that they should have not been selected for various reasons. We think that they, in order to have due process, need an opportunity to respond to those allegations and they have the opportunity to do so in writing. After that, this is kind of akin to a quasi judicial process. We would give the appellant's the opportunity to respond to the contentions or arguments made by the selected applicants and they'd have five days to respond in writing to their, to whatever contentions, allegations or arguments are made by the selected applicants. This isn't going to go boom, boom, boom. And that's one of the reasons we're talking about the hearing date being in July, those two midweeks in July because the written arguments will be submitted to the city and then the city will be sending them out to the other applicants so that they'll have an opportunity to respond. So there'll be a, a day or two lag or so between the time they get them and their response time starts to run. We are also suggesting that the city will prepare, staff will prepare a staff report, which we hope to have done at least five days in advance of the hearing. And that staff report will be circulated to all of the applicants, not just submitted when the agenda goes out, but they'll get separate submission to all the applicants of that staff report. So they'll have the opportunity to know what's in there and prepare however they want to address it. We are also suggesting that the hearings, that, that the appellant's have 10 minutes to argue their case, if you will. And that would be excluding any questions by council. That the selected applicants also have 10 minutes to argue their contentions in case. And then the rest of the applicants who are not either the appellant's or selected applicants would have five minutes each and public three minutes in terms of the comment period. We are hopeful that we will be able to do this in a town hall setting with the council present, with the appropriate distancing, as whatever's being required at that time. I suspect it'll be our six feet requirement that we have in place now. But that we could have town hall accommodate this to where at least the applicant who is presenting their arguments would be there and be in front of the council. We may not be able to have all of the applicants there while the presentations are going on. So we have to figure out a way that they can watch and listen to what is being said to the council. And then when their turn to present their arguments comes, they would then come into the chambers and make their argument in person to the council. Give the council, I think, better opportunity as well as the applicants for dialogue regarding arguments that are being made. We did receive one letter and the city clerk, I think, is going to receive, or is going to read part of it and comment into the record tonight. But it's from one of the appellant's, Mr. Del Rio. And I'm not going to read it because I think Regina will do that. But in his letter, I would just comment that he is arguing, well, first of all, he raises the argument that he raised at the last hearing or the comment that the council should issue more permits. That's really not for the council tonight. But then he also goes on to make the argument that the council should not rush into these appeal hearings, that we should put it off until we can schedule it in a full town hall type meeting. He's asking for more time. He wants at least 30 minutes per appellant to argue their case. And those are really the main contentions that he makes in his, did I get this? Am I still there?
Yep, you're still with us, John.
Okay. For some reason, my screen went, went blank, but I'll just keep talking.
No, you're, we see you.
Okay, so that's his argument. We feel that 10 minutes is more than enough time because each of the appellant's has submitted, in some cases, some very lengthy briefs and arguments regarding their contentions. They will have an opportunity to rebut in writing any arguments that are made by the selected applicants. So we feel that 10 minutes really is sufficient time. I mean, if the council feels they want to give longer time, that's fine. But we do feel that 10 minutes with the rebuttal periods that they have to be written on is plenty of time for the appellant's to address the council. We feel that the selected applicant should have an equal amount of time because they are the ones who are at risk. We feel that the selected applicant should have an equal amount of time because they are the ones who are at risk of perhaps losing the selection that was made by the city manager. Kind of summarizes the report, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that we might have or you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Council members, any questions for Mr. Driscoll's staff at this point? Yes, Kara. Oh, your mute button.
I see that we have a lot of the applicants in attendance tonight and they're probably wondering about the topic of increasing licenses. Is that, do we know when that will be coming back to council?
We're still in the process of gathering information.
Okay.
But it should be coming back perhaps as early as your next council meeting, if not certainly the one after that. But it could be as early as the next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Hey, seen, one question, John, from me. In terms of other written correspondence that may have come in from any of these, whether it's the appellant's or the applicants that you said had, why the 10 minutes was was more than enough? I don't know that all the council has seen those items. But if these are going to come before us, I certainly would like to make sure everybody has those full records so that we have a good sense of the entire, you know, of the entire record going forward on these.
My anticipation, Mr. Mayor, is as soon as we have a date set for the hearing, we will be distributing the written materials that we have to the council. So you'll have plenty of time to read them.
Okay.
Be thorough with them. And then as other written communication, for example, you'll get all the appeals. And then as the, excuse me, the comments by the selected applicants come in, you'll get those and then you'll get the rebuttals from the appellant's. So they'll be staggered over a period of time, but you will have them all well before the hearing.
Okay, and I like, well, for my, I like to get a copy of the original submittals for all these people as well, whatever they submitted as their, as part of their, of the RFP.
So their initial application.
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, that can be done for sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, so any other questions or comments at this point? Seeing none, we will go ahead and open up the public comment portion.
Now taking public comment from Annie Aubrey.
Good evening, Annie.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I just had a question. The appeals that were already submitted, I'm with Chexwell in the center. We were one of the original applicants, but the appeals that were already submitted, are they going to be altered by this date? Because it has been, you know, by the, if we were selected in January and the appeals are in, you know, July, that's almost, if not more, six months or so since they've submitted their appeals. How much of that are we expecting any changes? I'm not really sure, since we're only getting a few days to understand what the concerns are against the appellant's or the, sorry, the, the selected applicant. So I just want to make sure that we are given both the original and also the latter in case they do change. And then secondary, I do vote to move forward with, you know, the hearings and we'll do whatever we can to show up for the July dates.
Thank you, Ms. Aubrey. And we'll get, I'll get clarification for what you just asked after we get through the rest of public comment. But we will all look for an answer for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and read the public comments submitted from Mr. Del Real. He wanted me to read this into the record tonight.
Yes, please.
He says, "My team, Trees Placerville, strongly feels that it is fundamentally important to schedule the appeal hearings in an open and public space, which includes an in-person hearing in front of the city council. We respectfully request that the city council schedule these hearings during a time when they can be conducted in person rather than online. Our team is opposed to any type of Zoom hearing platform due to its limited scope of authentic engagement and dialogue. Finally, with regards to the appeal hearing time and format, we respectfully ask for a minimum of 30 minutes to deliver our team's appeal presentation with the assistance of our attorney. It should be noted that on November 12th, 2019, Reserve House, an applicant finalist, was given 30 minutes to deliver their appeal presentation in front of the Placerville City Council." Thank you. And we will now hear from J.C.
Mute. I'm starting to figure this out. It's unmute. Okay.
Hey, John.
You know, if you got two more people on here, you guys could have Hollywood squares. Just saying. Okay, having been part of this process, I don't think, I think what John does describe in 10 minutes for them to say what they need to say. If they provide a lot of written background, you guys can all get up to speed on it. You know what they're talking about. 10 minutes should be more than enough time for them to make their case. I understand that there's a move maybe to expand the number of permits. I have, not that anybody cares what I think, but I have no strong feelings about that necessarily. However, you all know, if you have four, there'll always be a fifth team. If you have six, there'll always be a seventh team. And there will always be somebody badgering you with a lawyer attached to them to try to make you feel bad about the decision you just made. And so this could just go on literally until everybody that applied gets one because you'll just have done that by then. So, you know, if you pick another number, that's fine, but that won't end this discussion. It'll just mean there'll just be somebody else knocking on your door that didn't get one of the golden tickets. I think that, I agree that the public setting is important, mostly because I, this is one of those things where you kind of have to see the people talking to you and absorb what they're saying. One of the things that we're doing up in Lassen County to hold meetings is we're actually holding the public meetings. They're holding their city council meetings and their supervisors' meetings at their fairgrounds in this enormous room where you can have a whole bunch of people and they are literally just spread out all over everything. And so you could conceivably, if you found a space that was suitable, you could have these meetings sooner rather than later, which I would be a big fan of, having been part of the process. The city is desperately going to need revenue and this will be potentially a source of said revenue. And it also, just one more thing that you folks don't have to worry about, which I know can be a pain. So, you know, you may want to go look at perhaps the fairgrounds or someplace like that or some large venue where you could mark out six feet of space, have you folks at various tables. You could have a public meeting. They're, we're doing it in Lassen County and it actually works pretty well. Anyway, I believe that is all of my two cents.
All right, thank you, John, for the comments.
Now taking public comment from Kelly Trisana.
Good evening, Kelly.
Hi there, am I unmuted?
Yep, you are.
Awesome, thank you, staff and city council. I appreciate you all being here tonight. I am going to stay with my original stance that I agree that the meeting should be held completely in person. I don't, I don't want to participate really, even if it's only the public comment that's coming through Zoom calls. I still think that public emotion and presence is important in these deliberations. I don't think judicial court, if we're relating these to court cases, as I've heard it now a couple of times, I don't think court cases would be held with a witness testifying on Zoom call kind of a format. I, at the same sense, I don't want to slow anything up. I am happy to do whatever we can to move this forward. I really like the idea of maybe like the giant room at the fairgrounds. That's so oversized for a city council meeting, but, you know, we're open to, or even completely outdoors and, you know, I don't know. But, and then the other, I had the question that I know you can't answer directly, but at the end, are we going, as the selected applicants, going to be able to rebut against the, I just don't, I don't know. I guess I'm kind of confused as to why the back and forth in writing, if we're having it in a course. And then something that, on the other subject, as far as the number of new licenses or changing the number, I think it was said in the last meeting also, that was, you know, I would only hope that you'd only be considering that with a completely new application process as we all did not apply to be one of 14 or 13 or six or seven. We were intending on being one of three. And I just only see more appeals, you know, continuing this lengthy process as it is. So I don't want to like have that chain reaction, as I think Clary she's kind of alluding to, of chain react, of chain appeals. So thank you all so much for all this continued effort. I know you've done a lot of homework on it and reading and a whole new industry for a lot of you. And we're going to get there soon. I really appreciate all the help.
Thank you, Kelly. And we'll again circle back on your question as well at the end of public comment.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's a few questions and comments out there. I don't know if Cleve or John, if you wanted to make any clarifying comment. I think the first one was from Aubrey in terms of, I'm trying to see, I think, kind of the same as Long Kelly, just in terms of the process. And going over that again. And then there was a question in terms of the time, which I think is more of a question for us to consider as a council from Mr. Real. And then also some ideas of different potential locations so that we could have these sooner rather than later, so that we can have that built in social distancing requirement.
I wouldn't be apt to comment on these things, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I think I took notes and have most of the issues that the various speakers raised. And I start with Annie's question about can they change? And what I interpreted her question as meaning, can they change their arguments or their contentions that they've made in their appeal to something else, add things to it or that sort of thing? No, they cannot. They had an appeal period during which time appeals could be filed. They filed them. They have certain contentions and arguments that they've made. They cannot raise new and different arguments. So I hope that answers your question. I believe that she, as well as the other applicants who are selected, all have received copies of the appeals. So they should know what the issues are. But each of them will be receiving copies of the appeals, as will the rest of the applicants if they haven't. But I believe they all have. They will have an opportunity to respond to those arguments. So those arguments can't change. They're fixed. They got to respond to those issues. And then because the appellant's have the burden of proof, they get an opportunity, they get the last shot, if you will. They get the last word. So they get an opportunity to come back in and comment. And that, I believe, addresses in part some of Kelly's comments regarding why dues that go back and forth like that. Well, the appellant's have the burden of proof. They go first. Whoever's being attacked goes second. And then the last word is given to the people of the appellant's who have the burden of proof. We're trying to keep it similar to a court process, but it's not a court process. We know that it is an administrative process, but it's still, you still have to be aware and make sure that everybody has due process and is able to fully vent their position. And with regard to that, I think it's staff's position, certainly it's my position as a city attorney, that 10 minutes is enough with all of the written briefing that you're going to be receiving. You will also be seeing them in person. And I think that's very important that you hear the arguments in person from whoever making the argument. Public comment can be in person. They can come in and make their comment in person to the meeting or they can do it electronically. The arguments of the other applicants, if they want to be, they can come in and do that in person. The selected applicants will be appearing in front of you in person. The appellant's will be appearing in front of you in person. If we follow this procedure that we're outlining, they just won't all be there at the same time. But you will be hearing each one of them comment in person. I don't know what the requirements are going to be regarding the number of people that can gather in one place come July. That's something we need to think about. There may be restrictions on that. I also don't think it's a good idea to force somebody into a public setting that they're not comfortable with. And there may be people who will not be comfortable for various reasons with even a large gathering if they're social distancing. It's not always adhered to. There may be concerns about that. So it's something that I would think that is a consideration that the council would want to give in terms of how they're going to proceed with this. I think that covers most of the questions and comments. If I missed one, please let me know.
I think that's what I had written down, but certainly if anyone else heard something that I didn't jump in. But is there any questions, comments now from council after carrying the public comments as well as staff's rebuttals or staff's answers on those? Yes, Vice Mayor Thomas.
The idea of moving to a larger room to accommodate more audience and better participation, is that a, I don't want to use the word reasonable, but is that something that we could, that we could reasonably do considering this probably needs to be recorded? And is this something that, is this also, because I know sometimes we record and also put out these meetings for public viewing online and sometimes we haven't. And we haven't actually done this type of meeting, but I know that some of our meetings have been done that way that are special meetings. Is that a possibility or a reasonable possibility? I guess that may be an adjacent question.
I, maybe I can comment first, John. I think it is a possibility. I heard somebody mention the fairgrounds. Hopefully, some of you remember the meeting we held on homelessness at the fairgrounds. It was not, not real pleasant and remember it was quite warm that day and there was not air conditioning in the building or very good air conditioning. So we run, we love, we run that potential. There may be other buildings we could look at in terms of finding something large enough to make that a possibility. But then we would need to also look about, there may be, depending on where we come up with, there may be a rental cost. If it's a county building, hopefully not, they would be able to work with us. We do also, correct me if I'm wrong, John, have a restriction that we have to meet within our city limits. There's a requirement for jurisdiction, I believe, to do that. At one point, we looked at potentially at the new sheriff's building. They have a quite large EOC out there that may have been a potential, but that's outside our city limits. I don't believe we could meet there because of that. There are also issues with the filming of that. If we decide we want it to be live or even if we want it to be filmed and recorded, we'd have to look at potentially bringing someone in to do that. And I'm not saying that couldn't be done, but there may be a cost involved with that. I don't know for sure. But all of those are possibilities, but we'd have to do some more research on it.
Okay. If I might make a suggestion, if the council feels that we're proceeding in the right direction, I think in all probability, the very least we could have is a situation where each speaker will be in the chambers and appear in front of the council. They may have to do it separately at different times, but we'll be there. Now, if we proceed on that basis, that that's at least the very least we're going to have and things open up or we come up with other alternatives, then we can bring those back to the council to modify that. But this at least gives us a chance to set a date and get the thing moving.
Okay, thank you, John. Yes, Councilmember Borelli.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I just really want us to move forward. I think staff's laid out a great plan. The fairgrounds is the last place I would want to have a meeting that they, if any of you have been there for any kind of speeches, you can hardly hear folks. And I know we have our own system, but I think we're looking at a lot of cost and I just think it's unnecessary. I think what you've laid out, it just makes sense. And I just think we ought to go with it and get this moving.
Okay. So on this, just as a clarification, John, do we just need to give you general direction here? Or is this one where we'd have to actually take a?
I'm going to need a date set if we can get one or at least some alternative. I'm going to need a date set if we can get one or at least some alternative dates that we can look at to make sure they're going to work. I mean, I suppose if we picked a date and one of the applicants had surgery scheduled, we would have to think about changing it. That certainly would be good cause. So yeah, a couple of dates that we could look at would be important to get. And then if you could give us direction that yes, move forward in the the manner set forth in the staff report with the maintaining the options of perhaps some sort of a facility where everybody could be present.
Okay. Well, and I do believe we need to start moving this along as I think some of my colleagues have said and see where we're going with this. So I like to get this done as expeditiously as possible, but making sure that staff has the time they need to be prepared for this and for us to be able to read through all of the collateral as well. So does the staff giving us two dates? The week of July thirteenth and the week of July twentieth, does anyone see any issues with those dates for yourself?
Just a reminder, Mayor and council that the fourteenth, July fourteenth is their city, a regular city council meeting. So.
Right.
How would we have to have a, that would be like an all day thing for us. I'm thinking, wow, that's a long time to.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest you start in the morning like at nine o'clock. And I honestly think the first hearing will probably be the longest and they may get shorter after that, but everybody has the right to, you know, present their case. So you could be there for the better part of the day.
Yeah. I would just say, I think we have to plan for, you know, an all day nine to four o'clock type, just in case that it goes that long.
With a meeting on top of it?
No, I would say we've picked my thought. Yeah. Yeah, a non, a non city, a non regular city council day.
Great, thank you.
Right, yeah. And I wasn't suggesting the fourteenth. I just wanted to say that you probably don't want the fourteenth because you have a council meeting. Just a reminder also that normally you go dark for your second meeting in July. It's been past practice. So if you want to take that into consideration at all when looking at this, you can.
I'm not sure any of us are going anywhere.
Do you want to go ahead and can I propose that you send out a meeting request for any Monday, Monday through Thursday, except for the fourteenth on those two weeks? And you know, there's that, that there's that, there's a program for doing that. It's called.
Doodle poll or?
Yes, yeah. Yes, and we could do a doodle poll and check with, and just run it out there and find out what works for everybody.
There's a possibility that the fair is going to, is scheduled and what were the, what's the date that they picked? Or does it matter? Except that, you know.
Patty, they're looking at that weekend, I believe of the thirteenth, that twelve thirteenth.
That's what I was thinking.
It would be like the eighth through the twelfth, I think.
Yeah, there you go, Clay, that weekend.
I believe that's correct.
So this would be after any, I mean, if that was a.
I don't really see why that would be a limiting factor.
That was a, I guess that was a motion I made.
I'll second this motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. We've had public comments already on this.
One, one other question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And I appreciate Cleve reminding us that we normally only meet once in July. Was there any sense in looking at that date? I know staff enjoys the ability to get away from the grind of the agenda schedule. So if it's going to take away from that, we may not.
But it gives the staff that week to maybe not do something.
Yeah, okay. A question for Mr. Driscoll. Do we have to set the date tonight by law? Or is there a range of dates allowable?
No, you don't have to set the date by law. We can set the date, but I want obviously to have a date that the council is comfortable with and meets all of your needs. So that's why I brought it to you as a body. We can do what Councilmember Thomas suggested and have the date selected through that program. Forget what it's called. You know, whatever works best for all of you, given a range of dates.
No, that's fine with me. I think that's an excellent way to go about it.
Yeah, I mean, some of us might have other, like Transportation Commission or State Cog or something, but I'm sure we can work, we can work through that if it works for everybody else. This is an important thing. So I'm sure we can make the dates work.
So I would suggest we'll go ahead and do those two weeks, keep it in our back pocket. If something doesn't work out, we could look at your potential second meeting in July, which we don't want to go dark. We could look at that as a fallback date if one of these doesn't work.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Regina, should call roll on for us. Thank you.
Mayor Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Akuna.
Hi.
Councilmember Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to have the council affirm whether or not the council is agreeable with the procedures that are set forth in the staff report for the, for the actual hearings, that is, the time limits, the schedule of when the briefing would be done, that sort of thing. Subject to the venue maybe being determined later on at time that we have more information as to what the restrictions may or may not be.
I believe so. And I'll just take a quick poll here of everybody's, anyone have a problem with the ten minutes and the potential venue location? I seen, I think, I think you're good to go there, John, with, with that. We always have the ability to ask more questions or seek more, more information from, from both the opponents and the applicants during this process. So if it goes longer, it goes longer, but we'll give them that ten minute for sure for their, for their comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item twelve point two, adopt a resolution approving contract amendment number four with Debury, Drake Haglen in the amount of sixty five thousand, seven hundred and eight and twenty two cents for the Clay Street Bridge Replacement Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And Ms. Neves has this report for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Saragosa, Vice Mayor Thomas and council members. The item before you proposes an amendment to the existing Clay Street Bridge Replacement Contract with Debury, Drake Haglen, the amount of sixty five thousand, seven oh eight and twenty two cents. This project continues through the NEPA and CEQA process, including section four F, section one oh six and AB fifty two, all the consultations that are related therein and general environmental clearance. The tasks within this amendment are specifically related to cultural and historic resource documentation, clearance and impact identification for the project. Work under the proposed amendment includes additional time and effort associated with section one oh six consultation and coordination, specifically with the section one oh six consulting parties consisting of Friends of Historic Hangtown, Friends of Clay Street, Ancient Order of the Druids, Grove One, Grove One, Placerville, the local grove, and the Wopoomis Neeson on Mewoc Tribe and the Shingle Springs Band of Mewoc Indians Tribe. The city and Caltrans as the CEQA and NEPA lead and oversight agencies continue to work diligently through the legally defined process towards project environmental clearance. On February nineteenth of this year, the state historic preservation officer, SHIPO, concurred with the city and Caltrans determination of eligibility for various components of the project. The most notable is that the state historic preservation officer agrees with the determination that the Clay Street Bridge itself is not individually eligible as a historic resource. The next step is the preparation of a finding effect memorandum of agreement and management plan that will establish requirements and guidelines for delivering this much needed safety project while still respectfully preserving and protecting all nearby documented and eligible cultural and historic resources within the project's area of direct impact, the ADI. Amendments one and three and the current item before you, amendment four, were all dedicated to environmental and cultural resource clearance related to the Clay Street Project. As mentioned, mentioned previously, the city continues to do its due diligence and follow the legally defined process. And with approval of this amendment, it will bring the contract value related to environmental clearance to approximately three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars with approximately one hundred and sixty three thousand dollars of that amount or about fifty percent dedicated directly to cultural and historic resource documentation and preservation. Staff's recommendation is provided within the report. This concludes my verbal report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. Council, any questions for Rebecca at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
Now taking public comment from eight four six.
Hi, it's Jennifer.
Hello, Jennifer.
I guess, I guess I just, I just want to say that Rebecca's report is emphasizing a decision that the SHIPO made, which is kind of still being challenged because it's all based on Caltrans reports that don't address certain aspects of the history of the bridge. The bridge is one thing as far as individual eligibility, but it seems like there's consensus across the board, including the SHIPO, that what is definitely being impacted is a historic district that I believe that map even in the staff report states that it was formally designated as eligible for National Register of Historic Places. And so the bridge is in consensus, a contributing element to this district. And the district is, is recognized as nationally significant. So that's really important. As far as, you know, the debate about the significance of the bridge, I think, I think we're still debating that as consulting parties and we do have, you know, our, well, we have a meeting with the deputy SHIPO on Friday, but I would just say that it will be, continue to be debated. And I guess I will also just say, you know, the last time or it was like at least a year ago, I think, you know, when, when all of this, you know, amending this agreement was adding money and such, there was language talking about, you know, the possible need to do an environmental impact statement in addition or beyond, excuse me, beyond an environmental assessment finding of no significance, which is the pathway that they are on currently. And I don't see how you can avoid. I mean, it seems like you've already demonstrated that you've got a nationally significant historic district that is being impacted. So I really don't see how you can be avoiding an environmental impact statement under NEPA, which is kind of the parallel in the process on the CEQA side of an EIR. It's an EIS. As you remember, the, the roundabout lawsuit, you know, bumped up, you know, the, the level of planning to an EIR and that we kind of have a similar thing going on on the NEPA side where there's a need to do a higher level of, you know, study and, you know, analysis and alternatives development. But I guess, I guess the, the point is just, I don't feel like the report is acknowledging the significant impact to the district. It is a significant impact to the district. You're talking about rearranging a significant part of the historic district. And I guess, you know, just putting that on, on council's radar. And, you know, other than that, I guess I just want to say the main thing that I think that people should realize is nobody, I've asked a lot of engineering experts, a lot of, I've asked the people that did all the concrete bridge inventories for Caltrans, these historic consultants, these architectural historians, cannot name a single other bridge that is built to design the confluence of streams. This is the confluence of Hangtown Creek and Cedar Ravine Creek. Nobody can name a structure that is built to accommodate a confluence. And I would ask Rebecca as an engineer, do you know of any other bridge anywhere in the world that is built in its structure to accommodate a confluence of streams? And then I will just also add that these, this confluence of these two streams, these are two very significant streams associated with a very significant period in history and is likely a hugely archaeologically significant spot on the planet where two streams converged. We've already seen the historic, or excuse me, the grinding stone that was discovered just a little bit east of this site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from call in user.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, so is this just a contract amendment for the work they're doing on getting from the draft EIR? Creating language and documents for the final EIR?
We will answer questions after all public comments is taken. So we will get, we'll get answered to that.
Okay, so anyway, not knowing that, I'm wondering when the culvert was replaced be from Pacific Street along Cedar Ravine? Did you have an environmental document to allow that? Because this thing is, does not have a full EIR yet and the city went ahead and reworked a historic culvert right there at Pacific and Cedar Ravine. I know that was part of the impact required off of Marshall's increase. The other two is when you guys are doing public comments on this, you really did do a last call for public comment to allow for the delay in the system. So Regina needs to say, taking last call for public comment and wait at least thirty seconds because there's a delay between the video watching and listening on the phone. To avoid feedback, I have one on and one off for audio. So I tried to comment on the last item and I couldn't because you guys just said, public comment's done. So you need to get it together and realize you have technological hurdles and please allow the public to comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Sue.
Hi Sue, I was really pondering as to make a comment on this because I haven't done really the research on the actual documentation, but I'm just looking at this and it seems like you've spent about a million dollars on these documents to do this project that most of the city of Placerville does not want. And I'm curious how much money, I mean, you only had so much money to do the project if, it just seems like this is being fed to, you know, I know that staff gets paid from these funds and a lot of other people and it's just really discouraging to see this go on and on when, when it's going to be very destructive to a very historically significant area of Placerville. And I just, it, I just can't, when all we hear all the time is why everybody comes to Placerville is because of the historic feel that we have and our city council seems to want to do everything to undo that. It's just really frustrating to understand why we continue to spend money on this. And I would ask that you do not approve this extension of the contract to blow up downtown. I think it's going to be detrimental to all of those structures in that area and the moving the Druid Monument is going to be horrific. And you've got the PG&E vault that's right under there that you're going to have to deal with also and gas tanks and all kinds of fun stuff. So I doubt that there's going to be funding left to actually do this project. And it would have been nice to have done some lovely upgrades to that area that would have made it a lot more walkable, beautiful, usable, instead of making a big old freaking interchange. But I would just ask that you not approve this extra sixty five thousand dollars, especially at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Now taking public comment from caller zero one zero.
Good evening.
Hello.
Yep, you're on.
Hi there. This is Lisa representing the Wopoomis Tribe. I just want to make a point that the archaeological study that was done for Upper Broadway, which probably SHIPO was also looking at for Clay Street since it is a Caltrans archaeological study, that study was totally inadequate. The archaeologists that conducted that study copy pasted from other documents. They did not walk the entire length of the project area. And as you could see, we the city discovered that there's been a long term site there that has been.
Lisa, are you, are you commenting on Clay Street or are you commenting on Upper Broadway? This is about Clay Street.
Well, it's kind of, it's both because that Caltrans study does apply to both areas and as my understanding is. And the Caltrans study, that's the archaeological inventory that.
We're only talking about the, it's not for both. It's just for Clay Street. So if you have comments on Clay. So if you have comments on Clay Street, on this particular project.
Okay, well, let me finish my sentence here and then, then I'll go away and then you'll be okay. So the, the, the documents that shippo might be looking at for Clay Street in order to be able to make this decision regarding the bridge, if they're relying upon these inadequate archaeological studies that Caltrans has, that, you know, needs to be looked at again and then another assessment made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Steve.
Good evening, Steve.
Hello, I just wanted to state that I am all for replacing the, the bridge and get it up to code. The sidewalk does not, the sidewalk isn't even separated in a vertical sense. Does the guard rail doesn't do what it's supposed to, you know, as far as the handrail, it's too low, people could fall over the edge. It's time to replace it. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Now taking public comment from John Clarici.
Evening, John.
Okay, I wrote you a letter and so I won't say what's in there. I know we have to keep coming back to this. It's like Groundhog Day. There is no historic district. There is a lot of old Placerville, but there is no historic district. We're not besmirching a historic district that actually exists in any kind of legal framework. It's an idea in some people's heads. Now, are parts of this town historic? Certainly they are. You are talking once at a, I think that this is, I think to, to really get at the nut of the cultural and historic histrionacy of that part of Placerville, I heartily endorse you spending another god knows 60 something thousand dollars on this particular effort because it will get to the very thing that all the advocates want to get to. So I endorse you, I suggest you spend extra money on this. The EIR/EIS thing is just like what we talked about with the weed. It's an obstructionist thing. You won't find out a single thing from an environment of the NEPA document that you don't already have in your secret document. And in fact, they kind of look the same as we've mentioned before. You are building a road across a parking lot. As much as whatever used to be there might have been historic, there hasn't been an Ivy House since when, Patty, 1964, I think? And so, you know, it's a road across a parking lot. And nothing you do will be enough. You could provide the nth degree of study for this thing and the folks that are against this project will find an nth plus one thing to be against. So let's do this, let's button this bad boy up and let's move on. And then you guys can make a decision whether or not you want a new bridge or not. Oh, I like the other guy too, very brief, briefer than me. Go for it, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Now taking public comment from Kirk.
Evening, Kirk.
Hi, I'm on a computer this time instead of the phone. I guess I'd have two comments. As to the term historic district, there's two different meanings that are used. Some of you think of historic district as that which requires special consideration for preservation, such as you'd have with an historic preservation commission locally to enforce guidelines for construction and repair, things that kind. But I don't know that anybody could really seriously dispute that it is an historic district. It is an historic area, whatever term you'd like to use, but it's certainly reasonable to use that same term. The second is that there's often people who say it's not popular or it is popular, something of that kind. A number of years ago, the city had a chance to find out exactly what the public thought. You had us a poll, an opinion poll that was done for the cost of nine or $10,000. And it was used for the purpose of promoting the tax initiative that was on the ballot that year. But it asked all kinds of silly questions that were not meaningful. And there could have been questions that had to do with what you think of having an historic district, having standards for construction, for repair. What do you think of replacing the Druid's Monument or moving it? What do you think about removing the bridge? So I would hope that since that was an effort made once before, no matter how inadequately, you could actually come up with surveys to do more often, come up with a random sample, like, you know, every 10th person, that kind of thing, or whatever it is, and, and see what they think of these specific issues. That would be more helpful. Those are the two things I guess I'd offer to you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Now taking last call for public comment on item 12.2. No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina.
Mayor, if I could, please?
Yes.
I would just like to add that we did have the two items of written comment, one, two additional ones besides those you spoke, one from Carl Hagan, who spoke, speaks in favor of moving forward with this and with the project. And the second was a letter you received from Marion Washburn, also in support of the project and moving forward with it and approving this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Cleve. And I know there was some questions out there. I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Neves. I know she was, I saw her taking notes there. So if there's any clarifications you want to make before we continue on here.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so a couple of things, you know, just kind of for folks' information, you know, Mr. Clarici is correct, there is not a national historic district there at this time. What we have done in the cultural documents is we've made a generous assumption that there is potentially a historic district, which is basically a generosity of thought. It's like, you know, it's, okay, let's say that there is one. Luckily, emotionally removing, you know, interest in defining a national historic district, there is a mechanism and a process for defining a national historic district. And it's actually described in the National Register Bulletin 15. It actually identifies the process in how to define what, what defines, what makes up and what can, and the contributing elements and how to move forward with designating a national historic district. So I really want to be clear about that, that there isn't one that actually exists. We've made the generous assumption that there could be one in the future, but Mr. Clarici is 100% correct, there is not currently one. The other is, there were some questions related to, does this work actually support the environmental documents? The answer to that's yes. You know, we are very much doing our due diligence. We are researching, you know, documented resources and we're, I mean, we're, we're going through the entire environmental and cultural process related to Section 106 and AB 52. You know, in order to identify what resources are within an area, you go through a process where you submit your DRB forms to the state. And what happens is you end up being put on the California Historic Resources Inventory System, or Information System, CRIS is the acronym for it. CRIS is what is the database, a confidential database that logs and it's not only these resources, but their locations. And so in order for a resource to be adequately protected, somebody has to make the effort to put in the DRB. That is, somebody has to document what that resource is. And it still stays confidential, but in order for it to be a legally protected resource, that effort needs to be done. So, and that is, you know, the framework of how all environmental processes are addressed. The other comment I wanted to, or clarification I wanted to make was related to an earlier comment related to accumulative effects analysis. I want to be clear that this actually typically applies to the NEPA process only per the Council on Environmental Quality Regulations. And there is in fact a handbook for utilizing and, and creating such a document. It's typically included in the NEPA environmental document. And that document hasn't been fully developed yet because, as I mentioned, our cultural efforts right now are related to developing that document as a complete document. The city does respectfully follow Caltrans's lead on the NEPA process because the NEPA, they are the NEPA delegated oversight through FHWA. And that includes all the templates and guidelines for the process. And they are following those rules in accordance with the requirements as well. And I think that that's it for now. Oh, and then just one kind of clarification, I did receive the same communication, you know, in support of the project. So I just really want to clarify that not everybody in this town doesn't want this project. So it's kind of a month's statement. So I would say there's still some people that want this project. They, they take the time and the effort to write in that too. So anyway, that's all for now. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. There was one more about a culvert, and I'm trying to remember the context of a culvert being replaced. I don't know if.
Yeah, Ms. Chapman would like me to cite to her a reference of all the convergence bridges within confluence of streams that have ever been done in the history of projects that she consulted with several professional engineers. So I mean, I don't have that list readily available to me, but I'm sure I could provide her one.
Okay.
Rebecca, I think, if, Mayor, if I could tell me, I think maybe we were referring to the comment by, I believe it was by Michael Drobish regarding the repair work that went on at Pacific.
Yes, yes, correct, correct.
As far as the culvert repair, Pacific Street to Cedar Ravine, so I want to be clear that actually the top of the culvert had collapsed. So we actually, all we did, rebuild the top part of it. We actually didn't touch any of the substructure of the culvert at Pacific Street. We basically bridged outside of it. So a little bit of clarification on the work that was done there.
Great, thank you, appreciate that, Rebecca. Okay, any further discussion from counsel? Yes, Ms. Teller.
Just a couple more questions for Rebecca and just kind of generally. So this agenda item, it, it doesn't really get into the merits of the EIR. It's about finishing the EIR so that we can then evaluate the merits of the historic resources that come out of that EIR. Is that correct? That's my understanding of this.
Yeah, you're, you're close, you're really close. And so, yes, it does support the merits of the EIR. So when the city released the draft EIR, there were some components related to cultural resources. And so we have two tracks, the NEPA track and we have the secret, secret track. The EIR is on the secret track. The consultation, Section 106 consultation is in the NEPA wheelhouse. So in NEPA, we had, we had done the EIR, we'd circulated for public comment, we received public comment. Subsequent to that, we received questions regarding, could we be added as a consulting party? So mainly the consulting parties listed in the staff report, Friends of Historic Hangtown, Friends of Clay Street, and the Wapoomasnees and On Maywok Tribe, all requested to be consulting parties, actually about a year after the city's initial solicitation on it. So they showed up kind of late to it, but the, you know, the city said, you know what? We, we welcome public comment. And so we extended and said, absolutely, you can be a consulting party. And we held consulting meetings with the consulting parties. And there hasn't been a lot of new information that's come out of that, but we were able to track down some. And so we said, you know, let's just go the path of, like I mentioned, we're making the generous assumption that there is a historic district and that these are eligible components. And so we, you know, we said, okay, let's just really look at everything again. We really, really want to make sure that we're doing this right. And we want to extend the generous assumption that there's a national historic district. Making that assumption revise the documents, and that's what this item addresses. And those revised documents with that generous assumption are then going to be inserted into the environmental documents in their appropriate locations. And portions of the draft EIR will be recirculated for public comment because we've made that assumption that has changed the outcome of those documents. Does that make sense?
Yes. And could you kind of give a timeline for when we expect the next circulation to happen and the final EIR to come around?
We are looking towards late summer. We had some delays on getting a couple of the documents turned around, you know, and then COVID hasn't really helped. But no, we're looking at like late summer, maybe early fall.
For the, the next round to be recirculated and then public comment to come back?
That's, well, for it to be, to be released for recirculation, yes.
Okay. And then how long is the public comment period for that recirculation?
Sequois, 45 days.
Okay. So hopefully we could have this by the end of the year?
That's the hope.
As the final, okay. And then another question, in terms of funding, all, all of the monies discussed here are going just towards planning and documentation, or just documentation at this point. And then, you know, there's comments about why don't we use this funding for other things? Is the construction portion of this project funded? And if so, with what funds and it, you know, how much is the city paying for this project out of, you know, the general fund or?
Okay, yeah, so there's, there's kind of a couple of complex questions in that. So let's see, as far as is the construction funded? The answer is sort of. And what I mean by that is that it is programmed through the Highway Bridge Program. So as we get closer, then, you know, the funds, they kind of queue up the funds and that way they aren't holding the, these monies hostage while, you know, other projects are coming in beforehand and saying, hey, we're, we're ready to build our bridge. So it kind of keeps the flow of bridge construction moving throughout the state. The other comment related to how much money are we actually spending as far as local money, I guess would be the question, right? So we currently have, as your budget impact section shows, prepared by Mr. Warren, thank you. The Traffic Impact Mitigation Fund has dedicated $65,817. It was actually related to a TIM fee collected under the Cottonwood Project. And then the RSTP program has $400,000. It's now currently the STBGP, State Transportation Block Grant Program. Those are the $200 that are allocated to the, or $200,000 that are allocated to the city every year, that's been added as well. So out of $1,575,924, we've got $465,817 of that is what could be considered local money. The rest of this money cannot be used, HBP money and the CMAC money, the small amount that we did use considerably, cannot be used on any other projects in the city. They are dedicated to this project and the, and HBP supports the merits of this project. It is a bridge safety project and it is a bridge safety program that supports it. So did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Vice Mayor Thomas, I think you had a comment or question?
Anyway, I have a comment. And this is more of a general comment in terms of the sweeping generalizations of everybody wants this and nobody wants this and we're going to destroy all the historic elements of our community. It really just turns me, you know, whatever you have to say after that just kind of disappears because those gross generalizations and these sweeping generalizations really, in my humble opinion, have no place in this conversation. And it makes it more challenging to, to, to converse on this, to hear what's going on. You know, I, I personally want to hear comments and I want to hear, but, but, you know, taking digs at the city council is, you know, and telling, telling us we're going to destroy the history of our town is, all of it is just, it's, well, first of all, it's nonsense. I don't, I don't believe that anybody on this council, and I had got a chance to know everybody here, has, has that intent or feeling or desire or, they just don't. And so I want to make, you know, I want to make it clear to, you know, those that are listening. listening, that have concerns of that, that's not the case. And so I, I do appreciate those that have meaningful comments, that give their thoughts and considerations without the sweeping generalizations. So thank you.
Well said, Vice Mayor. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's kind of a tough act to follow, Dennis, well spoken. And Kara, those were great questions, sort of bringing everybody up to speed, the realities of this project, the funding, the timelines, why we are where we are. And of course, Rebecca always seems to have the answers at hand, and that's greatly appreciated. Kind of one question, then perhaps a comment. Rebecca, how, and again, one of Kara's great questions is where are we seeing the final EIR? And I know we've probably promised that, oh, God, unfortunately, for the last 18 months. But I will say for the last 18 months, we have been occupied in obtaining more cultural and historic resource information from all of the recognized experts in the field, from Caltrans and NEPA and what have you, and from the state. So while I hate to have seen that delay, it does, I believe, indicate that we are doing our due diligence with the state historic officers and et cetera. So the question is, if we get successfully to the end of this year and we circulate that final document, where are we at with the final design options for this project? When will we know the bridge is X by X by, you know?
Well, funny that you should mention that. We're actually, so in order for a project to go through environmental clearance, there's some design that has to go forward in terms of a tight selection for the bridge and overall width, et cetera. The geometrics is what you're speaking to. So the geometrics of the bridge, we have an initial first blush of it in the draft EIR. However, since that time, you know, like on all things, the city does listen to public comments, and one of the comments that we received from both those for and against the project was that they felt the bridge was a little wide. So we were looking at options at reducing the width of the bridge. And so that's actually in flux right now, too. Currently, in the EIR, it was two travel lanes, two bike lanes, and two dedicated sidewalks. We are now looking at continuing the Class III shero from Main Street onto the bridge and just having dedicated sidewalks with a grace shoulder. And that does reduce the bridge by about six to eight feet. So that was one option we looked at. We're also looking closely at our hydraulics, you know. You know, I mean, I'm an engineer, and we certainly utilize models, but if something doesn't make sense from things that we've seen in historic performance, then we question that. And that's exactly what we're doing. We're questioning the current hydraulics model and looking at what we can do to lower the elevation or the presence of the new structure, too. And we're looking at intersection layout and all kinds of things. So I mean, there's, you know, we're at 35% design, and that's kind of where you're, you're pulling out every idea you can possibly have, and you're putting it in the middle of the table. We've looked at all kinds of things, including not replacing the bridge at all. But, you know, the bridge itself is getting structurally worse every year. The bridge inspection report originally has been, I believe it was at like 65, and then it dropped down to 62, and then the last one was at 52. To drop 10 points in a sufficiency rating in two years is a lot. So, you know, it's not getting any healthier, and that's something to consider. Once it hits below 50, that is definitely some structural concerns. So did that answer your question?
It does. Let me just, one quick follow up is, though, that at some point in the future, the council and the community, most importantly, the community, are going to have an opportunity to see what the final design of the bridge and street rear end consideration and comment on that design.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, no, there's, there's going to be a whole public outreach process with that. We're not designing this in a bubble. You know, this is not, you know, staff's bridge or whoever's bridge. It's our community bridge. Absolutely. We want, you know, we want that, that public input. I mean, you know, some of the best input we got was when we did that public outreach effort for Main Street, and it was, you know, great. That's, we got a ton of ideas from that, and that came from the public. So thank you. We appreciate the participation.
My reason for asking that question, thank you for that answer, is to kind of, to follow up on what Dennis had said, is that there are continued comments from a portion, a small portion of the community, that imply that all of these decisions have been made, that this will be a massive bridge that'll rival any engineering designs in the state of California. It'll be totally out of scale. And the impacts, we heard the comments this evening, it was going to be massive, that there was going to be destruction of history, there would be no input, the Druid Monument would be ruined. I know none of that to be a fact, and I know none of that to be beyond the input of the community and city council members and staff to take the time in the future to find the right project for this intersection. And it's unfortunate that there's a certain number of emotional tag words that are always included to cause people to automatically dismiss the hardworking staff and the council members and our consulting firms and our partners at Caltrans, et cetera, who are going through the steps, who will, in the future, take the opportunity to get all additional input for that final design. So to hear this evening that we've destroyed something historic, and one of the speakers mentioned that, you know, indeed, it is a parking lot. The Ivy House is frequently lovingly defined as a fire trap and a dump that dumped its sewer right out into the creek.
You're right.
That's a piece of history that I don't need to relive. I can, I'm happy enough just hearing the stories about the sad condition that that building was in. Then we can go over and look at the beautiful Federated Church and see that the organ, if we want to go visit the organ at the organ room at the fairgrounds, that corner is gone. Intercounty Title was, I believe, before my history, was a lumberyard at one point. That's all gone. I did get to witness your ingenious Band-Aid over the historic Cedar Ravine Creek culvert, and most people would be glad that they don't own that as part of their inventory because of the very unengineered and unprofessional way that that was built. But that was the good old, that was truly the good old boys. Throw some heavy timbers across from it, it'll last as long as we live, and that was their concern. So, you know, Intercounty Title building, very nice addition to the park, far from the story. So I, again, want to just kind of join in with Vice Mayor Thomas in saying, you know, let's be realistic about where we are. We are listening to the community. There are still, unfortunately, still a lot of steps to go, but they're valuable steps. And so thank you very much for your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Councilmember Borelli.
Yes, I would like Rebecca, I think, that's who I'm addressing this to. Did you see Marion Warsburn's letter?
I did, yeah.
Would you talk about how much the city is obligated to that original agreement with the Clay Street, the Clay, I'm going to call it the Clay Street Agreement, that, and the funds that were put aside for that? How much does that play into this?
And I might need to defer some of this to Assistant City Manager, Director of Finance, Dave Warren. This, this part of it was a little bit before my time, but my understanding is, as part of a condition of approval to Cottonwood, they paid a TIM fee amount, an amount of $65,817. And that is, that, that project was in part the nexus for getting those funds in, into, into the project. However, I also want to be clear that the city has actually had planning documents on file, and I think the oldest one I have on my shelf over there is from 1965, and it identifies replacement of the Clay Street Bridge back even then, because at that time it was actually identified as, you know, they didn't have the term functionally obsolete or geometric deficiencies, but they did, they did identify the need to replace that bridge to start adequately addressing two-way traffic.
Right.
So that's my understanding of the history of that project.
So, but, but that agreement is, is it obligating us to replace that bridge or to widen it? How much does that agreement play into what are, I mean, the decision that we are eventually going to make, how much, how much importance do we give merit to that? And maybe, maybe John Driscoll knows the answer. He was our city manager then, I think, I'm not sure. But anyway, this is, you know, it's been addressed, and we've talked about it forever and ever. So I, I'm just curious to know how much that plays a part of this.
Patty, I'm not sure if I was city manager or city attorney at the time. I thought that agreement took place in the 90s. I haven't seen it for years, and I couldn't really tell you what's in it. What I do remember is that, as has been stated tonight, that the improvements to Clay Street were a condition of approval for the Cottonwood project, and that money was paid as a mitigation measure. If it's not used for that, then there's a question of what happens to it. And I'd have to go back and look at all of the documents before I could give you a good answer on that. But certainly, that was a condition of approval for that project, that Clay Street be improved. Now, whether it meant taking out the bridge or putting a new one in, that I couldn't tell you at this time.
I thought it had something to do with, that that was such a narrow spot down there, and that if we approved any more, you know, the phases that went into Cottonwood, that something had, that that had to be addressed. It might be to go back and look at it and see the exact wording.
I know it was contemplated as additional phases of Cottonwood would come up, they would also pay in to, towards that improvement.
Okay.
As mitigation measures. I believe that was kind of the thought at the time.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty. Couple of, on my end, for you, Ms. Neves, in terms of, I know you mentioned there was a couple of groups that, I forget what the wording is, but they're like, not consultants, but they're allowed to be like parties to the...
Consulting parties.
Correct. So did they, I mean, and I'm not asking for anything for, anything long, but what, what were their, was there general suggestions about what they wanted to do for the bridge that's essentially falling apart?
I mean, there is kind of a gamut, and I can't get into all of the specifics because, again, this was in a Section 106 consultation meeting, which is protected information, you know, to protect cultural resources, locations, et cetera.
Right.
However, I will say that, you know, kind of the same public comments that we heard this evening were right within, within those guidelines or within that framework. And, you know, we did have one consulting party that actually was in support of the project, and then we had one consulting party that, and then the other three that are listed there are not in support of the project. But, well, actually, that's not entirely true, because the ancient order of the Druids, the National Order has voiced their support. You know, there's two, two main monuments within the city. You have the Druid Monument, and then you have the grave site. And one of the complaints that we heard, and we actually have provided that, you know, correspondence with the Druids to the various consulting parties, too, is that the Druids do get frustrated that they can't really go to the Druid Monument, you know, I mean, they kind of, kind of have to play Frogger to get to it. So it's been, you know, they, you know, they would like to have it be accessible or like to have, you know, an information sign or, you know. So there's been a couple of iterations of the intersection layout that have afforded a pedestrian refuge to actually go and surround and protect the monument. The other thing, too, is they were also aware that the monument had been hit by a vehicle and that the city had to pay for the repairs on that. So, you know, kind of in line with the consulting parties, they voiced their opinions, and we wrote everything down, and we tried to decipher where the resource protection element would need to play into and go from there.
Gotcha. Now, what I was trying to get to, I mean, because doing nothing is not really an option here. It's sort of like on the homeless issue where, yeah, we can do nothing, but if we do nothing, then we have exactly what we have, and that means we can't enforce anything. And in this case, we have a decrepit bridge that's structurally deficient, that Caltrans has also said we need to replace. So no is not an option beyond, well, then what else do you have out? I mean, what's, what are the other options? And just for clarification, if, I mean, I know this is like third rail here, but in terms of the Druid Monument, would it have been moved with a roundabout?
No, I believe it was to stay in the exact location that it currently is. It was, there's a couple of iterations of the layout that I saw, and again, this goes back to it being a kind of a conceptual design phase, but we have some exhibits just down the hall, actually. One of them shows the monument dead center in the roundabout, and then at that point, it would have had to been moved and slightly adjusted. And then another one shows it kind of off-center but within the roundabout, and, you know, that would have protected the monument at that point, too. You know, we don't have that option at the moment. You know, we could go through the process, but, you know, that was what the CMAC money that I mentioned earlier was dedicated towards was CMAC, you know, as everybody, I think on council knows, is congestion mitigation, air quality funds, and CMAC eligible components are related to all kinds of improvements, one of them being roundabouts. But another one that was mentioned in public comment was pedestrian access and facilities, and those are CMAC eligible components, and so are bikes. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that we had the CMAC funds deprogrammed from the project to, due to the removal of the roundabout. And from an engineering perspective, to remove a roundabout is kind of like removing a tool from a transportation engineer's toolbox. But, you know, it is what it is.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. If there's no further comments, I'm happy to entertain emotion if there's an emotion.
I'll move approval of the item.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a first and a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Acuna.
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Rebecca, John, Cleve, for all your work on this. To be continued. Okay, I'll just take a quick poll of council. Do you all want to move on to the next item here, or do you want to take a quick break? I'm good either way.
I'm good to stay. That's fine, if everybody else is.
All right. All right, let's, let's move on then. Just a second here. Getting myself situated. Okay, so we're going to move on then to item 12.3. Provide direction to staff on potential options for sidewalk dining on Main Street amidst Stage Two guidelines for COVID-19. And Mr. Revos has this address tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Cleve. I'm going to, I'm going to start this item off, and then both Rebecca and Pierre may have some information to add to it.
Okay.
This item kind of came to us throughout. We've been looking at ways that we can help our businesses, especially our small businesses throughout the city, get back up and running, have success moving forward due to COVID-19. And so two options that we, that we have looked at, and I will need to emphasize that you probably look at these, these are primarily related to our historic downtown area as opposed to the other business districts, but potentially could be looked at in those other business districts also. So the two programs that we've looked at, I will discuss separately. The first one is to extend sidewalk dining. As you recall, when the state came out with new guidelines for dining, a state that allows dining in at restaurants, they noted that they restricted that dining in order to have the six-foot distancing that is required still. And as part of that, they stated that they encouraged the use of more outdoor dining to perhaps increase, increase space and increase the availability of dining with these restaurants in order to allow them to do more service and make more, provide more for their restaurant goers during this time. provide more for their restaurant goers during this time. So we looked at how we could do that and we looked at a couple of options. One of those would be to extend the dining area out into the parking area where the parallel parking area is currently provided on Main Street. And we looked at that and that is an option that you could consider at this time. The other option was to actually build temporary sidewalk areas out into the parking area and allow a restaurant to provide dining, outdoor dining on the sidewalk so it could improve that, that area. Many of our restaurants on Main Street, we do have a sidewalk dining policy in place now, but many of those restaurants are not able to do sidewalk dining due to there's not a wide enough space. We do have to have, and I'm going to rely on Pierre to add to this, but I think it's a five foot clear space in order for ADA requirements, clear space on the sidewalk. And some of those, because of different features, light standards, trash receptacles, et cetera, some of those may be, some of the restaurants may be prohibited from adding sidewalk dining in that area. So we looked at the option of if we could expand the sidewalk, then it could allow those restaurants to do more sidewalk dining. It also allows them to be, I believe, I'm going to say more compliant in terms of if they want to serve alcohol in those areas, that has to be contained, a contained area. Having that adjacent to the actual restaurant in a contained area is probably, works better than having it separated in the parking area from the restaurant. So there are pros and cons to looking at it that way. The con to this potential sidewalk dining and doing it this way is that it, it takes away parking. And it also primarily addresses issues for the restaurants. It does not address issues and for other retail establishments, other retail downtown. However, if that were presented and the need were, was there, if another retail establishment wanted to look at doing something similar and have more sidewalk sales, so they put some of their product out for sale on the sidewalk for advertising purposes, I think we could be open to that scenario also. So that is, that is the first of the two that we have looked at. Our city engineer put together some sample drawings that you have in your quick back of the napkin, if you will, sample drawings that, that, just to show kind of how that could work. And those options that are, they're giving you actually show both ways. Either the dining in the parking area or the dining on the sidewalk. The second program that we have looked at that was, has been suggested to us and as I've talked to other city managers around the region, several are looking at this within their regions. Would it be actually to close the road to allow dining and/or other retail actually to spill out onto the street in order to give more room and to still be able to hopefully create the social distancing under that scenario? So we looked at the possibility of perhaps one or two nights a week, being able to close Main Street. And primarily we will look at doing that, our recommendation would be to look at that from five in the evening to eight or nine o'clock at night. So it's times when some of our other retail businesses are closed anyway. So it doesn't, it doesn't affect them. Many of them close around that time or at least by six o'clock, I believe. But the main ones that are open during that time is restaurants. So we believe this would primarily affect the restaurants again in being able to add even more space outside of their restaurants in order to provide dining for their customers. The negatives to this, again, it does take some work to close down the street in terms of public works, police. And perhaps we would consider this a special event. So our community services department who would handle the closing of the street and take care of that. The other thing that we have a concern about, does this attract too many people downtown? Does it become actually an event where you run into problems with social distancing, whether or not you can even do it? So we have some real concerns with this one, but we wanted to at least present it to the council to see what your thoughts were on it. So this is primarily just to have a discussion on this tonight and see if you want us to pursue something, we can do that. I want to note that in their staff report, it also talks about our parklet program. We currently have the one parklet that was donated by the county. We would like to get that one back up and operating again. And our community services director, Terry Zeller, and development services director, Pierre Ravas are looking at that, how we establish where that would be located for the next little while, if we can get that out here again. They are also looking at the possibility of establishing a new parklet program where perhaps additional parklets could be built, perhaps even built and owned by a private business, located similar to this one, that might allow, again, for additional seating, outdoor seating for restaurants or other businesses in the area. So with that, I will close my report. And I'll look to Rebecca and Pierre if they have any additional items they would like to bring up under this item. We can, and then I'll take questions from.
Thank you, Cleve. Rebecca, Pierre, anything else you wanted to add at this point?
I'm good. City Manager Morris did a great job.
Okay. Okay. Council, do you have any questions for staff at this point? All right, seeing none. Let's go ahead and open up public comment.
Public comment is now open for 12.3. Sue Reese, you may go ahead.
Unmute. There we go. Hello, City Council. Thank you for taking my phone call. One of the questions I have regarding this is what are we looking at in terms of timeframes? How long would this go on? Have we thought that through? Is it going to be when, you know, everything is open? Is it going to go on indefinitely? Where are we at in that?
Okay. We'll have a, we'll probably be discussing that as we go further here. So we'll, we'll definitely have some answers on that part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call in user, you may go ahead.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Okay, I'm concerned about the city creating a whole line of parklets without a parklet ordinance. I think you really need to create an ordinance with all the parameters, all the public input, an actual system where we really think about it. There's a lot of cost involved. And hopefully the city isn't going to take on those costs of creating these. If the business is going to, the slope of the road is going to make these things with ADA compliance very complicated. Like it outside of bricks. If they wanted to put a parklet outside of bricks with that upslope and the road crown, nah, it's not going to work. So, and the other thing, if you do do this, first thing, you need to have an ordinance, right? Scope it out, get all the public input, how these work. And if you do do multiple parklets, for lack of a better term, you cluster them. You don't want every other parking space being a parklet making it more dangerous for cars trying to parallel park between them. You would cluster them together, two or three, and a row of parking spaces. So maybe a business has to bring their wares out. The other thing I don't like is it seems like the staff report is restaurant centric, right? So you need to apply the law, the law equally to all businesses. Restaurants, retail, everybody gets the same shot. So the staff report really seemed to focus on restaurants and alcohol. So please think about all the other businesses. Other than that, hopefully it's just a discussion and you'll come back with a ordinance that we can all start pulling apart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Sue.
Hi, Sue Taylor again. So I asked a few people. Anyway, I had a couple of questions first. Right now you allow, some, some folks are being able to put tables out and I don't know if there's a temporary ordinance that, that's a possibility. I know right now the current streets, street dining, it's, you have to go through planning and it's kind of complicated. And, and I guess on that policy, I've never really paid much attention because we, until we actually had to go that way. But I noticed in the existing ordinance, you have to keep a five foot passing space. And I'm kind of curious as to why five feet was chosen because for California, ADA requires 48 inches. And actually you, under circumstances where you have obstructions and different things, you could actually go down to 36 inches as long as you have a five foot passing area every 200 feet. So I just had some questions as to currently, is there something that folks are being able to do temporarily to spread out their restaurants? And then some of the questions on program one, you know, I agree, if you do what you're talking about, you may end up with having a wall to level it out on the other end of this thing. I see some ADA issues. Parking, you know, how's that going to work if you have these things randomly? And if a property owner is paying to put that one in, can they actually keep it exclusive to their business? And then what about drainage and a few other things? It seems like that might be a little complicated. And I, I really like the thought of the program two, where you have the street closed from five to nine when it's cooler. And I, and the three day closure where, then it, then everybody's dealing with the same thing. And it's something that you don't have to do a lot to bring it in and take it out. It's just, you can end it at any time. It's not, I just see a lot of moving parts with program one that would have to get addressed. And program two is something you could do tomorrow. So that's my two cents and that's all I'll say. Thanks. Bye.
Great. Thank you, Sue.
Last call for public comment on 12.3. Now taking public comment from Kirk.
Kirk, you might be on mute still.
There we go. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I have a number of comments to follow up on the first one raised tonight. We need to know the timeframe. If, for example, you wanted to close Main Street one night a week to allow for restaurants to be open outside, it seems much more conservative to do that once or twice with existing materials and structures. See how it works before you commit yourself to, you know, a long period of time. The structures that you'd have to use for what amounts to a parklet is complicated. What kind of ordinance are you going to have for public safety? How it's constructed? Would it go before the planning commission? That's another thing. When you're talking about helping the merchants, we're all sympathetic to small business. They've been horribly impacted and will be for some time and we all want to help. But the question is about how it would work because your primary recipient of this assistance is restaurants. And you're taking away parking from merchants who've been complaining about the lack of parking for a long time. When parking came up once before a few years ago, the suggestion was made that you're going to be closing the county, the district attorney's office. So make, advertise that, make that available. Right now there are people parking there all day. Why not make it available to the public? Advertise it. The same thing behind the courthouse, it's not being used on the weekends. Can't you put signs out? Plastic bags with signs on them over each parking area? So that you open up parking rather than consistently keep closing parking? And then when you talk about businesses and restaurants opening them up, what's the limit? Would it be all of them? Shall we close off Main Street permanently? So you need to have those things turned out in advance. I think I'd like to have a lot more information about the one parklet you did have because a promise was made that this is going to be a short period of time, put in during the summer and it'd be out by October. But it wasn't done until three or four months later. I think the first part of January.
32nd.
Last thing is, could you add a clock to the bottom of this so we can keep time? I think I was being told that the three minutes is up. Is that right?
Yeah, 30 seconds, so 20.
Well, hopefully you'll still have the clock. But I think those are the things to keep in consideration because you're, you're really talking about closing off Main Street. And if you're doing it because of COVID, you have no idea whether it's going to come back in a second wave, as many experts are saying, in the fall. And then what are you going to do? So I think that it requires a lot more planning before you go forward. And ultimately, I'd like to know who is it who's been asking for this? Which businesses have raised it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Taking public comment from John Clarici.
Hi there. I wasn't really planning to say anything, but, you know, I don't, and I don't own a brick and mortar business on Main Street. So I always caveat anything I say about Main Street. But I do have a fondness for it and I have been sort of helping out with some things like the lights and the flower baskets lately. It's funny, actually the vice mayor and I chatted about this a little while ago. Sorry, Dennis, I probably shouldn't have said you, but now it's done. Anyway, we talked about this a while ago because, you know, as it appeared that things were going to open up. You know, how, how could you do this in a way that would provide a benefit to the merchants downtown? Because they're, you know, all of them are. And, you know, I had, the, the staff report was well done. You have the three options, you either use a sidewalk and you use the parking for the sidewalk or you use the sidewalk for the, the thing, like in some parklets. I trust that you guys would figure out a way so you wouldn't have a piano key situation and the parklets would be clustered appropriately. My feeling about this is this. Let's not let, let's not let a good, I think this is a good idea, by the way. I think that we should be bending over backwards to help the merchants downtown. And I think that, I understand the parking issue, but let's face it, probably parking isn't going to be a problem for a while. Just as things sort of transition back into people going downtown, my gut tells me that the parking may not be an issue for a little while. Let's not let, let's not let perfection get in the way of a good idea that could probably be implemented fairly reasonably well with the appropriate restrictions. Now, I agree, as you go farther up Main Street towards the courthouse, yeah, I mean, you're not going to have Bond Street dining in front of bricks because everybody would just roll down the hill. Or you'd have to build something with a railing. That might get complicated. And yes, some of the merchants may not have an opportunity to move their wares out if they're not restaurants. But on the other hand, helping out the restaurants isn't a bad idea. And, and then other merchants might want to try to do this as well. Closing Main Street is always a big issue, as you well know. I think that there's an opportunity to do something here that is not too grandiose, that can actually be accomplished in short order. And, and I think obviously the last parklet was a raging success. People actually went, hey, where did it go? I know I did. When I drove down Main Street, I went, wow, it's gone now, you know? And I, I kind of missed it. So that's just my personal feeling. I speak for no one else. Anyway, let's not let perfection get in the way of, of a good idea. And I think that your staff and the folks on Main Street can come up with enough provisos to come up with a good plan. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John.
I see no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll just sort of set the, the stage here. I think the whole idea behind this is not to have to go to planning commission and to go through an ordinance and to set this up. This, this is not something we're looking at doing long-term beyond what, whatever we're talking about here tonight. But the idea, if we went through all that, we would never get something in place and time for all of these businesses that are suffering. The idea is to help them now. If you tell them, well, we're. If you tell them, well, we'll come back to you in ten weeks, I don't think that's going to quite cut it. So we are moving forward with something, and I really want to thank staff for coming back with something quickly, government time, and I think we did a really good job here coming back. And I know I personally talked to quite a few restaurants that would be open to this idea. And reason why this was focused on restaurants is because it's focused on restaurants. They have a specific prohibition in terms of how they have to seat people that is completely different than if you're going into a store. And at this point, the only store that I see that might even have a capacity issue is maybe the hardware store. Everyone else seems to be doing a pretty good job of social distancing and the same amount of people coming into their stores. But certainly, we could look at if somebody wanted to set up a sidewalk area for their goods. But there is a specific difference between what's happening with restaurants and what's happening with the rest of the brick and mortar. So that is the reason why the specific issue has come forward in the manner that it that it has. I think we have a lot of different things mixed in here between parklets and offsite or sidewalk seating and then encroachment into some of those parking stalls. I think that the parklets almost is like a side tangential thing to just whether or not we want to allow some of these businesses to have the opportunity that have the the ability because by geography, how it's laid out to put extra seating out. So I just wanted to frame it a little bit more for our discussion as we move forward here. So would open it up for my colleagues for any questions for staff or where we want to go. Patty.
I absolutely am not in favor of closing Main Street. We've gone through this, and when we, you know, talked about what, you know, what we're going to allow Main Street to be closed for, but to to do this every weekend is not something that we need. And you all know the reasons why on that. Also, and I know we're not talking about the parklets, but the parklets were not that parklet was not built for restaurant use. It was built by the health, it was funded through a grant through the Health Department, and it was for it was kind of a calming measure for people to enjoy walking along Main Street, you know, that kind of thing. So I just want to reiterate that. And also, I think I'm all in favor of allowing the street dining, but I think that we really need to set some regulations. And Cleve did mention that maybe one of the things they had talked about is opening it up to too many people coming in. Maybe we set a regulation that that can't happen, that we can't have, you know, people standing around milling about on the street. And as far as giving up a parking space, yes, that would happen. But if we if we made the hours for, say, not five, but maybe six, that would give the majority of the stores a chance to close. And so they wouldn't need those parking spaces right in front. The garage has plenty of parking to offer. And at that hour of the day, usually, the garage is pretty well, you know, there's not too many cars in there unless it's the farmer's market, and then you can't find a place. But that wouldn't happen. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you, Patty. Other council members, any, yes, Vice Mayor Thomas.
All right. With regard to the parking, I'm going to start there real quick. The courts are not in session now, and they, from what I hear, and I don't have this from, well, I had it from Cleve, so I don't know. I don't want to question the reliability. It's just that I think that the courts are taking a wait-and-see attitude, and they put off to quite some time in the future. But I don't know what that date is, and I don't know. Cleve, do you have that date by chance? Or is it a date certain, or it's just at some point in October?
I don't think the date has been decided for sure, to my knowledge.
All right. So the so the fact that the courts aren't going to be in session, they probably won't be holding jury selections anytime soon unless it's absolutely necessary, especially in this court, considering if you've ever been in jury selection, how crowded it is in there and their ability to do that. So with that said, the one of the biggest challenges with our parking downtown is the jurors, and especially in this environment. Now, the jurors are only there during the day. Now, Patty, you talked about, you know, the issue of this, the dining is more in the evening. However, these ideas of the parklets and the walkways will be an all-day issue. So we do need to consider the fact that they will be taking up parking all day long. Now, with that said, I think a lot of people right now are willing to park in the garage or park in the service lots to to be to give back or to participate in getting downtown. People want to get out. You know, I always say, we don't have a parking issue, we have an attraction issue. And so right now, we're very attractive because people want to go get out. They want to go dine. They want to be back out and socializing, at least to the extent that that we can't. And so that attraction issue, we have right now. And it is, and the attraction is these dining. And I don't know that, I do know that some of the stores downtown probably have are attractive for probably tourists and locals as well. But I think people, you know, the big thing downtown seems to be restaurants, which is why we have, why restaurants have multiplied in the last ten years by a huge factor. Let's see. One of the issues, when we talk about restaurants and we talk about all the other stores, I think one of the issues with restaurants that really resonates with me is that they hire a lot of people, and it takes a lot of people to run a restaurant. So this is an issue of returning money to the economy as well. They need to, you know, if they're going to expand their operation, expand more seating capacity, they're likely going to need more people as well. And that, to me, is an important factor in terms of, you know, getting money circulating in our economy and working through that. Let's see, design elements. You know what? I think that, in my opinion, when it comes to design elements, people are talking about, oh, my gosh, we got to go through committees, and we've got to figure out this, we've got to set ordinances. We need to just do this, in my opinion, this needs to be done today. And we need to help these restaurants today move this ball down the field. And so my idea, and I'll just throw it out there now, we could talk about it as much as we go, is to have a flat design. This is designed, this is the shape, you're going to have a wrought iron fence around it, or you're going to have a wrought iron fence on the sidewalk, screw it in, make it semi-permanent so that these are functional. And it's one design, and everybody gets the same design. And it keeps it simple, and it makes it so we have, we have an engineer on staff, we can, we can go to an outside source. And the other thing is, there's going to be an issue with people's, their investment in this. So there needs to be, there needs to be a return on investment for the merchants because the city, in my humble opinion again, is not going to pay for this. So the merchant who is going to benefit from this financially should also bear that cost. But at the same time, they should also have some realization that they'll have a return on their investment, and that we're not going to, you know, pull rug out from underneath them two, three weeks from now because we decide that we don't like it anymore. So if we're going to do this, I think we need to do it for a set period of time that they can do. And that set period of time, we could say, you know, we don't have to decide that tonight, but we can decide to do this tonight. And let the, and as we go along, that set period of time may help them decide. That's a tough one. You know, the question, is this tied to Phase Four? You know, what is the end date? And I'm a big believer that this has to have an end date, that, you know, it's four months, it's six months, it's designed to the, you know, when the state moves into Phase Four, the state moves into full Phase Three. And honestly, I don't know what that looks like, or when restaurants can go back to full. I was talking to a restaurant owner here, and he said his capacity was cut to thirty-five percent. And he says, he can't break even at thirty-five percent. He needs to have more, more business. And I think most restaurants will will say the same thing. Your overhead is not made in the first seventy percent of your business. It's last, you make it in the first seven percent, but any profit, any ability to move your business forward is done in the last thirty percent. I'm a firm believer in getting this done tonight, though. And I, I'm willing to stay here till midnight if that's what we need to do to work through it. Sorry, guys. But I think this is that important, and I think it's what we need to do for this or for for our community financially as well. I'll leave it at that. I have more comments, but I'll let it go for now, and and here we go.
Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to our dedicated staff. Mr. Yvaz, thank you for your, you know, we don't realize it, it wasn't just that long ago that Pierre actually completed the sidewalk dining ordinance. And there is a very clear process. One of the speakers talked about, they read that, and it's very complicated. And yes, it is, because it is the way an ordinance should be written. It protects the public, it protects the property owners, it protects the city, and from a whole variety of impacts. And so, yeah, that's the sidewalk dining ordinance. This, to me, is a reaction, and I think a very appropriate reaction to an emergency situation. Anybody has any idea what, when COVID is going to go away or when Wave Two is going to strike, please let us know, because I think we'd all be very interested. I think that this is a great effort on our staff's part to address a huge concern. One of the most impacted businesses is the restaurant business. Clothing stores, hardware stores, art galleries, all have an ability to space out their clients. They don't have to remove artwork or take down bins of hardware items. A restaurant owner literally has to remove dollar-creating tables or leave them empty if he wants to operate in the COVID environment. But we're in advanced Phase Two, I call it two-point-two. It looks like the governor is quickly going closer to Phase Three or Stage Three than I would have suspected. But again, we don't know. We will all find out as the weeks progress, as this disease does, it works its way. But I think this is a great, a great idea. I think it's, I'm a little disappointed that nobody recognizes, some of the public speakers haven't recognized, this is a government trying to get out of the way, trying to use common sense to let those people that are most impacted do just as Dennis said, they have to decide, one of these great designs, complete with flowers, that staff did, is what's going to work in front of their business. And they are going to have to put a significant investment into that because our engineering staff will go down and make sure that it is safe, safe for me to go down, walk down the sidewalk, or safe for me to go down and dine on that sidewalk. So there's still a lot of questions, and unfortunately, it's more pressure on the restaurant operators. They're going to have to decide, as was pointed out, yeah, some, some restaurant locations aren't going to work. You're not going to be able to level out the front of bricks in this, and make the investment. And I mean, it's just, again, common sense is going to dictate. And that, to me, also addresses how many parking places we are going to lose. I don't see that as a significant impact. The loss of one or two parking places as opposed to the loss of all the jobs and all the revenue from one of our excellent restaurants, far out, in my mind, for this emergency, far outweighs the concern of that one parking place that I'm going to lose in front of a restaurant that is willing to invest in the timbers and the design and the material to have it constructed to make this work. Now, it's, it's struck me that I would go to the next expert on our council, and that is Cara, Councilmember Taylor, and her restaurant expertise. I also went down and sacrificed myself on Friday evening and ate at one of the existing dining spots on Main Street. There is, there are a couple of tables that are legally there under the sidewalk dining ordinance that I was able to watch this past Friday. And as I shared with Councilmember Taylor at the beginning of it, I was thinking, no, I want the sidewalk to be the the superior structure, let the restaurant owner put his tables out in the street. Well, after sitting out there for a little over an hour with motorcycles and trucks and mail trucks and what, and what have you, and a tremendous amount of pedestrian traffic, I wouldn't want to eat dinner out in the middle of Main Street. So that convinced me that if somebody wants to do this, it would make more sense to let the pedestrians walk out next to the traffic. And that also allows the restaurant owner to operate with the tables up against the building, allows them to then sell alcohol, which I did confirm is available out there on Friday night. I was able to make sure that that license was in operation. So I think it's a heck of a great idea. I think it's still, there's still an awful lot of a commitment that I hope the restaurant owner, operators will will consider. And it's, and I think it's important to recognize that this is an emergency situation. It will have a time limit. I think we could probably do as well tonight by setting it because really, COVID is going to drive what our next, COVID and the governor are going to drive a lot for all of us. I'd be willing to do that. The parklet issue, I think that is just a distraction to try and take away from what we're trying to do. Actually, I would think that the nature of the parklet, just as Patty said, was designed for health reasons. You were not allowing social, social gatherings of that nature, so I don't think our own, the governor's regulations would not allow us to put a parklet out there right now. So I don't think there's any fear that this is going to lead to a rash of parklets popping up on Main Street. And as far as the closures on Main Street, I think there's been an awful lot of work that Dennis has done and Cara has done and the merchants have done. And I don't think right now is the time to go there. Let's just leave Main Street work. It was busy on Friday night, and I can't imagine anybody being pleased to have to have park. And you know how we all like to have our cars? And the audience that I saw on Friday evening very much was auto-oriented. There was plenty of parking, people coming and going. So but I just think that, at this point, let's not disturb the progress that we're making down there as far as getting into street closures, because it just doesn't seem to be something that's needed right now. So do we need to motion on this? Because I guess I'm at the most point where I'd be glad to make one, but.
We do.
Thank you for your time.
I think we're getting close, but I do want to hear from Councilmember Taylor.
All right, thank you. So a couple of comments I have on this. In terms of sidewalk dining and the decking and design of all that, I like Councilmember Thomas's idea of having it pre-designed and easy. That way, business owners don't need to spend their time and energy trying to hire someone to design something that they hope will get passed, let alone they may not have the bandwidth to even think about that. And I think that if it is going to be pre-designed, it should be pre-designed to be as cheap as possible, especially if the business owners are going to be paying for this. My gut reaction, and after talking to a couple of people, I really don't think that there being too many of these is going to be an issue. I think that, you know, the reality is that it probably isn't going to be right for all the businesses and all the restaurants. Some may choose that they don't want to spend the expense on a temporary thing, or maybe they don't want to lose their curbside parking space. So I don't really think that there being too many is going to be an issue. In terms of whether people are dining next to the sidewalk or in the parking space with the sidewalk continuing between the dining area and the restaurant, I think the dining should be on the sidewalk. It solves the ABC issue, and it's also just kind of a safety thing in terms of, you know, the flow of servers coming out with trays and pedestrians walking through the middle of that. You could end up with some collisions that would be not pleasant for anybody. So I think just in terms of layout and everything, it's better to have the tables on the sidewalk and the sidewalk detoured into the parking spaces. I do think that there, you know, business owners would need to have a return on investment and a guarantee of how long they would be able to have this available. I think, you know, kind of taking another look at this, maybe mid-September, so saying that, you know, we'll allow it till October one, and looking at it again mid-September to evaluate where we are with COVID nineteen, if we're going to keep it until we're at Stage Four or whatnot, but kind of coming back and looking at it mid-September and saying for now that they would be allowed through October first. So that business owners know that they will have it for at least three months would be my recommendation. And then in terms of closing Main Street, I'm not opposed to anything that's going to truly help the merchants out. I do think that it would be better to close Main Street on, say, Wednesday night when the farmer's market's going on to make it more of a festive thing than over the weekend when, you know, if there's business coming in that's happening over the weekend. I would, I would probably recommend tabling this, though, until we get more feedback from the merchants and make sure that it's something that restaurants actually want to do. I'm not sure how many people want to eat in the heat of the day on asphalt, if it's something that there's even interest in. So. So I would probably hold off on that until we get more feedback and hear from merchants, both restaurant and non-restaurants, that that's something that they would really want. So those are my comments. And Michael, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Councilmember Borelli.
I just wanted to follow up on some of the, a couple of things Cara said. I had a restaurant out at my building and they put in, they, they were forced to put in a fence because of the ABC. I don't know if that's, I, I think it's going to pertain to this and it had to be so many feet high. And it had to, they had to have a gate and, I mean, it wouldn't be our ordinance, but if they're going to serve alcohol, I think that, that, you know, this would apply to that. And also it had to be bolted to the sidewalk and I'm not sure we want a lot of bolted fences so that when this ends that we're going to have, you know, all these holes in the sidewalk. I don't know, maybe not. But, and then like I said, and I, and I wholeheartedly agree with Mark that I really think for safety reasons that the tables should be up against the building. And I, and I, I feel so badly for the restaurants. They, they really, like Dennis said, people don't realize how expensive it is to run a restaurant and they, they need volume. And so anyway, we can help, but to do it correctly and that's, there's, therein lies the key. So whatever we can do to help out, I'm in favor of.
Thank you, Councilmember Borelli. Okay, well, again, from my perspective, Mark, go for it.
I had just one follow-up question, if I might, from either Cleve, probably for Cleve. And that's regarding the parklet. Because there's some concern about, is it going to come back? Is it available for another restaurant to use? And I would think right now, because of where we are in COVID, we would be keeping the parklet in storage until we get to like stage four. What's the thinking with either Steve or, or, excuse me, Cleve or Terry on?
Well, I can, I can chime in first. I know Terry is working on this with Pierre. We are looking at bringing it back. We're just trying to determine the proper way to figure out the location. We like to look at it at a different location, give others an opportunity to see how it works. You, you've got a good point, but with anything we do out there, we could also put up signage even in the parklet to say, please observe social distance. And encourage that too. So if we wait until we get to stage four, we may not put it up this year. But we can consider that too. But I do know that Terry and Pierre are looking, bringing back a recommendation to you both to put that one out. And then perhaps even possibility of future, I know it was referred to a potential parklet ordinance. We are looking at that and, but that's a completely separate issue from what we're discussing here tonight.
Dennis, you had a comment?
I did have one last comment. On, on the street closure, I have some concern about our ability to control the number of people and the social distancing and, you know, how many people show up? Because if it, if the word got out and it seems to happen that when something controversial is about to happen, the news, the news organizations get ahold of it and blow it up. And so it could make, it could make an issue out of us having a street closure and have this party atmosphere on Main Street with no controls. How do you, how do you control who's going in if it's a street closure? Then is the, how do you handle the ABC license? And it's a whole nother process. Having worked on street closures before, it's, it's not, it's not just as easy as it sounds as just putting some barricades up and all of a sudden the streets closed, especially if you're going to involve alcohol. So I, you know, I, I cautionary tell to not go down that road unless we're really committed to a serious investment of time and energy in that process.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So again, I think, you know, time is not really a, a helpful ally here. You know, as we, as we contemplate this, every day is money for some of these businesses. I would, I mean, I wholeheartedly endorse moving forward tonight with, with something that we can put forward to these businesses to give them some certainty. I would even go beyond, I think Cara mentioned October 1st or somewhere around there. I would even say through the end of the year, unless we get to a stage four prior to that. I mean, that gives people certainty in terms of how long that they'd be able to have it. And we can revisit it, but I don't, you know, three months is, is still a pretty small window for people to do this. And this is a whole new territory that we're in. Mark, you're raising your hand. Do you want to?
Sorry, I had another question for Cleve. Is this going to be a no fee encroachment permit like we currently have or had?
That was my anticipation, but I'm, I'm welcome to council's direction on that also.
I would be, I'd be willing to attempt to begin to draft a motion with, based on that information.
If you're. That, that sounds good.
Okay, I'll start out with the easy one and I will recommend that we direct staff to not, or at this time, any further Main Street closures or any Main Street closures. That we direct staff to institute a temporary sidewalk dining emergency program from immediately through, I'll say November 1st or whenever we reach stage four.
That could go on until next year.
Yeah, okay. And that the dining will be adjacent to the building. And I, and I won't discuss parklets because it's really a separate issue. So at the moment, that would be my motion. So no additional, no Main Street closures. Allow a temporary emergency sidewalk dining program with the dining to occur adjacent to the building. They know cost encroachment permit to be obtained by the restaurant operator. And the temporary program would go until November 1st or stage four. I was happy to say December 1st. Who knows? It didn't rain last year.
And would you include the one design, the simple design, one?
Simple design, yes. Yeah, that was great.
And what about hours? It would be all day.
It would be all day because it would.
Yeah, it would be based on the restaurant operators.
But the, the hours is really irrelevant because the unit's going to sit there 24/7.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. They're going to be bolted in or, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I think hours is self-police itself. So that's my motion. You want me to say, let me say December 1st because the way our weather has been, that's very reasonable.
Okay.
Or December 1st or, or stage four.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
Oh, I also want to, is it necessary to clarify that I would not require any planning commission review? I'm watching for Mr. Driscoll's eyes to shift.
Yeah, I've been listening quite carefully because I want to make sure you don't go outside the parameters of the agenda item. And I think that encroachment permits are generally ministerial and over the counter. So I think your inclusion, I was listening for that in your motion, your inclusion of the encroachment permit takes it away from the necessity of any planning commission review.
Thank you.
There will be potential conditions on those encroachment permits as engineering may see fit in certain circumstances, however.
Which is what we would expect them to do.
Is there, is there a realization that there's a, I mean, do we need to have it in, in the vote? There's a final arbiter as to whether this can be done or not in a particular location?
If I'm not mistaken, there can be appeals of the administrative decisions and that would potentially come back to the council.
Okay, so that would, so this would go, did we, we had a first and a second, right?
Correct.
So this will go through planning?
No.
The planning department? Yes.
The planning department, yes.
And planning will make the decision on whether it's appropriate or not.
Correct.
Correct.
That, that decision is one that will be not arbitrary, but will be based on sound discretion.
Okay, how are we going to determine, the cost is going to be determined by, will the cost of engineering be included in the cost?
That.
Well, what, what I'm hearing is that we're going to present, we're going to prepare as best we can a standard design that will be uniform to all locations.
Okay.
And I'm looking at Rebecca and Pierre. I think we can do that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we would basically kind of come up with a general cross-section, if you will. And then, you know, staff would go and walk along Main Street and see where there may need to be some exceptions to that cross-section. And then we could either provide specific detail to the design of it or we could omit it from that location, kind of at the discretion of what works grade conform wise related to ADA path of travel.
So the, the, the construction of this, does it have to be? You just have to be able to approve it at the end of the construction and say, yes, you met.
I mean, as far as the construction of it, I would work with planning on developing this. You know, both DSD and engineering work closely on a lot of these kind of tasks. So I would say that in concept, you know, I would definitely be looking for development services input. And then as far as, you know, boards and nails, we could, you know, come up with a design that would work. You know, just kind of check in with each other.
The development service is primarily going to be looking at the sidewalk dining area itself. And we would be borrowing a lot of the design guidelines that are already within our existing sidewalk dining ordinance. Where I think engineering really comes in, it's in the infrastructure then to build that extension of the pedestrian sidewalk, if you will. That's where a lot of the safety issues, the construction, the drainage, all those different considerations to make sure that that structure needs the minimum safety required.
Uh, yes, Patty?
Okay, I'm going to get back and I know that, that we don't want to talk about hours, but what, and I'm going to bring up again what Dennis said. Once people hear about these restaurants serving on, you know, outside and it's going to be summertime and warm, that invites folks to want to do that. And how are we going to handle, I mean, there's only so many tables are going to be outside on that sidewalk. How are we going to handle the folks that are, you know, coming down and, and wanting to eat? And so they're meandering around and maybe that's good. Maybe it's good for other businesses that maybe are going to open. I don't know. But I just, I'm wondering about establishing some guidelines to handle this.
Well, I think we have the same issues now even. I mean, we don't know how many people are going to show up on a Friday night to just go sit in a 30% capacity restaurant today. I mean, I think we have to leave it up to the discretion of our businesses to practice what has been put in place by the health department in terms of best practices. But, I mean, aside from putting up a roadblock in, you know, at the, at the, at our, all of our county ends, we're not going to be able to police who's coming in here. And we just have to, you know, hope people are doing their best, you know, discretion. And I think this, this falls under that.
I'm not suggesting that, that we put up any barriers. I'm just saying it just maybe should be something we need to think about. And you're saying that, you know, it's not happening now. Well, we don't have outdoor seating now, you know. And like I say, maybe, you know, maybe this will help like the other businesses, maybe they'll want to stay open, you know, and catch the folks that are, you know, coming in for it. I don't know.
Mr., or Councilmember Acuna, sorry.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate my colleagues, your good comments because I would like to maybe add another item to my motion. That would be to that any design be approved by our development director. And that would allow him to work with engineering department. That would also allow for, I believe, a pretty clear appeal process that already exists. I'm watching for Pierre's head to nod. So that, that would be in addition to my motion. And I would just remind Councilmember Bren, I appreciate your concerns, Kai, but from what I saw Friday night and then also remembering that these restaurants are operating at a huge reduction in their tables. So what we might be able to allow them to add out on the sidewalks, they're still going to be, I would hope that they're going to go past 50 or 60%. So I, I think it's certainly a risk worth taking in the, letting it in the capable hands of the operators of those restaurants. So I would amend my motion to include designs to be approved by the development director.
Councilmember Taylor, would your second still stand?
It still stands.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Thomas?
I just want, for clarity, this is limited, I don't, this is limited to restaurants at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is sidewalk dining.
Correct.
Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Mayor Saragosa, I had a question.
Yes, yes, Mr. Zeller.
Yeah, I had heard that Councilmember Acuna was talking about part of the motion was to not allow any other street closures in the year. Did I hear that correctly?
No additional street closures.
Okay, because I just wanted to make the council aware that on August 20th, which is a Thursday, there's a tentative car show still on our books. We are working with the Hangtown Days Committee to find an alternate date since the June 6th one was beyond anybody's ability. But they're looking at a tentative date of August 22nd and then that's a Saturday. And then Winderlust is also that following Saturday, the 29th, as far as special events go. I just wanted everyone to be aware of that in the context of what we're discussing.
And Christmas, don't want to cancel Christmas.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think all of that's just going to be as we get, you know, more information as we go forward here. I mean, hopefully things are going just like they are today and we'll be able to, to have those events. But if, you know, things pop up, then everything we're doing will have to be reassessed. Uh, yes, Councilmember Borelli.
Is this going to be extended to the restaurants on Broadway and down on Placerville Drive?
I.
Good question.
From, from staff's point of view, we're not opposed to that. However, most of those restaurants
Private.
Have different issues. They're, they're in private parking lots. I'm looking for, where's Pierre? Pierre, how would that stand if, if a restaurant on Broadway or Placerville Drive wanted to create an outdoor dining space in the parking lot? Would that require a permit from you and could they do that?
I wouldn't recommend it. I think the circumstances as you described makes it very different than what we see on Main Street where you have, you know, basically the, the building frontage is right on the sidewalk. You don't see that on Broadway and Placerville Drive. The restaurants are typically well behind the private parking lot and typically they have their own sidewalk in front of the building frontage, but it's back behind the private parking lot.
But let me say, for example, I'll, I'll throw one out. For example, in Hangtown Village Square, the, the sushi restaurant, if they wanted to do outdoor dining, does that require something from you? It would be, all be on private property, not on, it's not encroaching on our sidewalk. It's a private sidewalk. Could they do something?
Typically, yes, they can. You do allow that. It would be no different than say when the Melter Sandwich Shop, when they had, they built their patio area and have dining outside. It's, it's fully within their property, not encroaching in public right of way.
Does it require a permit from you, is my question?
There would be no permit from us.
As long as the private property owner allowed it. Sorry, John, go ahead.
Yeah.
I was asking if there are any site plan review issues with respect to the expansion of the business that planning would, excuse me, that planning would want to have the opportunity to look at and approve or not approve.
Yeah, if it's just temporary, in other words, if they were to do permanent improvement, then it would probably go through a site plan review process to amend their site plan if they, if they have one. Then we would look at parking. In other words, if they wanted to encroach then into their private parking lot and they're then eliminating a lot of parking, we would want to ensure that there is an impact then on, on parking and pushing customers then out in the public right of way to park.
Because it could result in them losing the necessary parking in their parking lot that they have based on their occupancy.
That, that is correct. But I'm looking at Hangtown Village Square where there is sidewalk dining. That, that is correct, but I'm looking at Hangtown Village Square where there is sidewalk dining in front of, uh, there's a, a big restaurant, I think it's a.
The old Baskin Robbins.
The old Baskin Robbins, right. Those there, uh, you know, they're on their own sidewalk in front of their own business, uh, there's plenty of, of space to meet ADA requirement. There was no permit for planning to do that.
So I guess, I guess the question might be, can we include this as a temporary, uh, opportunity for these businesses? You, you talked about, yes, they could do this on a temporary basis. Do you need council's direction on that or you can do that as an over the counter for a temporary use permit?
Counter.
Okay.
Gotcha, so like if, if shoestrings wanted to somehow do some more outside dining, uh, in one of their parking spaces, they could just come to you and ask for a something over the counter if it made, you know, if it works?
Yes, that's correct, if they were just to put out some tables and chairs out there that would be then taken in, meaning when the restaurant closed. As opposed to if they were to expand their existing permanent outside dining area, if they were to expand that, then we could expand that through a site plan review process. That would be just temporary, both over the counter.
So I guess what I would recommend, council, and I don't know if you need to add it to the motion, but if we, if we go this route, what I would recommend is that we ask for council approval for a no-cost temporary use permit. If any of these restaurants outside of the downtown area, just as we're doing a no-cost encroachment permit, look at a no-cost temporary use permit for any restaurant outside the downtown area that wants to get a permit to do temporary dining within the same parameters we've talked about for downtown.
Cleve, I have one issue with that and that the agenda item was focused on Main Street. And now it's being expanded from that. I'm a little concerned that, that it's a little too far from the agenda item. Sorry.
Well.
It could come back, it could come back to the next council meeting for that same.
My concern is we're, we're losing two weeks, but.
But they can still come to the counter right now in the interim, I mean.
That's true, they could do that, we could, we could just tell them we're, we have to charge that until two weeks from now and then have council approve it at that point and we can refund it if necessary if they've already gone through it.
Yeah, because I agree, I don't want to hold up anybody.
Yeah.
Good. That worked, John, we do it that way?
I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
And I think that dog out there agreed.
Sounds like it.
Okay, we have further, further comments from colleagues, from council members, from staff. All right, seen none, we have a first and a second, so I'm going to ask Ms. O'Connell for roll call.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you, everybody, that passes 5-0. And even if, I was just thinking, you know, it's going to be hot summer, you'll want to park your car in the parking structure anyways. You don't want to be parked out in the street, it's too hot. All right, so moving on now to item 13, which are council reports from other agency meetings. And our first is the transit authority.
Nothing to report, no meetings, in class meeting.
All right, then, easy enough, El Dorado CTC.
Nothing, yeah, nothing to report.
All right, Lafco, Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we meet tomorrow night.
Great, SECOG, we just essentially approved our continuous resolution budget, at least for now. We just did our assessment of the executive director, who's done a great job. He actually requested, uh, we don't do any pay increases for him, which was a, a nice gesture on his part. And we're still continuing to work on Green Means Go at the Capitol to try to get that 700 million pot of dollars for us to actually meet our MTP reports. That's going to be difficult, obviously, in today's environment at the, at the Capitol, but it's important to continue to push for that regional funding for our greater Sacramento area, which obviously includes us. So that is the SECOG update. Placerville Fire Safety Council, Councilmember Borelli.
Yes, we had a, another Zoom meeting and the board discussed enhancing our outreach to the community. And we're going to, they're going to use some funds to prepare a, and send a mailer out, um, to Placerville and the nearby areas. Other things that they are thinking about is staffing a table at the county fair, um, staffing a table at the farmer's market when we're allowed, when they're allowed to go in. I, I'll tell you one of the things that they really need, they need to find more neighborhood coordinators. And if, if you can't, if you don't feel comfortable doing it by yourself, maybe they can do it, you know, two can, but the, all our neighborhoods, we really, really, really would like representation. And then they also discussed the city's vegetation management ordinance, ordinance. And they addressed some of the, the questions. And I know Dennis brought up about, excuse me, um, having seen results with folks that are clearing their lots. We, they talked about, um, I think it's through the state that they're going to have a class. Pierre knows about it on how to, so that we can send inspectors and advisors out to property owners if they would like that. But, and one thing that I really want to ask is, any of you folks that have done some extensive clearing or, well, I shouldn't say extensive, any clearing, if you have the bills to show that, if you could get them to the, the fire safe council, they can use all that as part of a compilation so that they can use it towards grant funding. So, so I really would like to ask anyone that, you know, has, you know, cut down a tree or whatever, cleared brush, especially if you've had to pay somebody to do it, you know, and you have the, the billing. So anyway, that's about it for right now, um, that I have. And I'll tell you this, they're, they're really working hard to, you know, try to do everything right and, and help out the community.
Great, thank you, Patty. And that's a, that's great, I mean, if we can aggregate some of those costs to, to get some grant funding in. I'm wondering if that's something we could include, like in a water bill, just for people, like with a web app, like an email address or something for people to send the information in.
That's a good idea.
Certainly. Oh, Cleve, you're up.
Does that include my doctor's bills?
Yeah, falling out of the tree.
I was just going to say, our next water bill is not till July, I believe is that correct, Dave? But we could look at putting something in there if you'd like to.
And we can also put it on our Facebook page or city page and.
Yeah. Great, okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item 14, request for future agenda items. Is there, yes, Councilmember Acuna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's more of a, kind of a question more than a request, and that is, are we considering moving back to town hall for our next meeting since city buildings are going to begin opening up?
Yes, we are looking at that, we looked at it a little bit for this meeting, however, we couldn't get all the pieces together, there are still some questions. We still have social distancing requirements as we move back, um, that are, that will be required both for the council, staff and the public. So there's still some issues we need to work out in terms of how we do that. We thought of trying to do a partial, partial virtual meeting and partial live meeting. However, there's some complications with that also, as you recall, the one time we met, except for Councilmember Borelli, who stayed at home and did participate in, in that, that did not work out very well. And so.
I'm an expert on Zoom now, so it's okay.
We, we need to find a better solution using our, a combination of our YouTube, our, our cameras that we have in our council chambers. And Zoom is not really an option. So we're looking at how we can do that without having to create a, too much more equipment or purchase too much more equipment to make it work in combination with what we have going on. So we're working on that, trying to figure out the best way to do it, so.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Taylor.
For future agenda items, do we, we want to bring back next meeting, the temporary use permit for, um, the businesses outside of Main Street, correct?
We'll, we'll definitely do that, yeah.
Yep, absolutely, good, good call there, Councilmember Taylor. Vice Mayor Thomas?
Oh, um, Councilmember Taylor took care of it for me, so that's great.
All right, I, I just have a request, and it doesn't necessarily have to be for the next meeting, Cleve, but just a kind of an update, I mean, from Councilmember Borelli's comments on the Fire Safe Council, just our fire, our, our vegetation ordinance. And then if we have any like numbers on, you know, we've visited 20 parcels and we've, you know, we've levied some fines or whatever, my, I like to get a better sense of kind of just what the program looks like so far in some of our enforcement efforts. And again, it doesn't have to be next meeting, but I, I think it'd be good for the public to know as well as, as we move forward and we get closer again in the fire season. Uh, yes, Vice Mayor Thomas?
One more thing, just so you know, I've gotten two more text messages for people wanting to donate for flower baskets on Main Street, so.
Good.
All right.
I'm here tonight, so.
We're getting closer. Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on to item 15, city manager staff reports, item 15.1, which is a verbal report from Mr. Warren on update on the budget process.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, city manager Morrison, I just wanted to provide you an update of where we are in the budget development process. You may recall that we had a budget workshop on May 13th and we shared that we started out with a $1.6 million deficit in your general fund. And your budget team was able to whittle that down to about a $664,000 deficit. So we still have a lot of work to do and we just want to share that we have begun a meeting with your labor groups to discuss the budget problem we have and, and potential solutions to that. There was a survey done for early retirement incentives for folks to interface with administration on, can't go into too much detail on that. We did get 11 responses, which is good, that will close out at the end of this week. And we anticipate doing the analysis beginning at the end of this week through early next week and then determining where do we go from here. Your budget workshop tomorrow, of course, we've canceled, as you know. We will receive our first quarter sales tax true-up report at the end of this week, we hope. And that'll tell us what, you know, how we performed in the first quarter with the COVID-19 impacts. From there, at your first meeting in June, we will ask you to take action on if you want to consider a early retirement program to initiate that. We'll also have an open hearing for your budget. And there's a good chance, just letting you know again, that the budget, we'll probably look at doing a continuing appropriation, which is basically, it would be like a 90-day, 25% of your existing 19, 20 budget to re, you know, to continue operations beginning July 1st. We would have another discussion at the second meeting in July, or June, excuse me, about that. We'll make every effort to bring a budget to you, but because of the impacts of COVID-19, that's very difficult. And then as we go through the summertime, we'll continue, you know, discussing budget with our labor union, labor unions. We will receive our second quarter true-up on August 26th approximately. And then on September 16th, we hope to have a budget workshop. And then a budget open hearing on September 8th, excuse me, that should be August 16th. September 8th, having an open hearing for your actual budget and then adopting the budget on September 22nd. So that's the tentative plan, of course, it really depends on a lot of moving pieces coming together and those things clicking and moving forward. And of course, you know, how the economy behaves. Good news is, is that we met with HDL last week, it appears that although certain sectors are down, they're not as down as much as we thought. For example, auto sales are down significantly, but not as bad. Building and building materials down, but not as bad. And the city of Placerville did reopen sooner than HDL projected, so those are all good things, we're hoping will have a positive impact to our sales tax. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dave, and thank you for keeping us as timely updated as humanly possible during a unprecedented time. I know it's a cliched word at this point, but appreciate all of your efforts.
You're very welcome.
Uh, council members, any questions at this point? Uh, yes, Councilmember Borelli?
I think this is for Rebecca. I noticed that somebody wiped out some of our fence along Highway 50 down near the Canal Street. And I didn't know it until recently, I found out through transportation, because I've been requesting some, them to fix a fence anyway, that it's our responsibility, that fence. And I guess that's what we accepted when we, when we accepted that project up there. So I, I am just curious to know whether we caught the culprit, he has insurance or she? How is that handled?
Um, I haven't seen the police report on that yet, though, but as far as the location and the fencing, it would stand to reason that that's probably ours to maintain. And I would defer to its repair to Public Works Director Nick Stone.
Yes, we, we actually do have a case number from that, Caltrans gave it to us today and our guys are working on getting that repaired, Patty.
Thank you.
Yep.
Cue. Okay, any other questions? We'll go ahead and open up 15.1 for public comment.
See no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Okay, that is a verbal report, so again, thank you, Mr. Warren, for that, we know more to be continued here. So upcoming items, I won't go through all these, but, uh, budget open hearings coming up, process for the parklet, uh, Placerville Armory. I know I've gotten a couple of questions about what's next if it's not going to be a homeless candidate, a shelter candidate, stormwater resources plan certification, Western Placerville Interchange Phase 2 Memorial Trail, Trailhead Plaque. There's a few of the items that are coming down the pike here. Uh, and with that, uh, it is, what is this, 9:39, I will adjourn this evening's council meeting of City of Placerville, so thank you, everybody.